Recently appointed, I mean promoted, I should say, to executive director, right? Got it right, okay, yes, thank you for volunteering to leave us in the pledge. Thank you Victor, and officially congratulations again on the record. All right. Any public comments to start our meeting, Ms. Batshielder?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead.
An individual wishing to remain anonymous.
Please come forward at this time, thank you for being here. Okay, you'll have three minutes. Oh, please, please, absolutely, just make sure we get your mic on, okay, great.
I mean, I mean no disrespect.
Oh, no, that's okay, please, go right ahead.
I would like to suggest getting an overhead projector here for public comment because we do have documents that will not be legible to distance that you all are at. I'm here about Boys and Girls Clubs of the State of Nevada, and this Boys and Girls Club employee was arrested for three lewd acts, excuse me, for lewd acts against minors, and he has been fired. The Boys and Girls Club, because they have a relationship with the Washoe County School District, wrote a statement that they do criminal background checks. We know for a fact that they can't because the domestic violence database containing domestically violent fathers in the state of Nevada is a concealed database. This is, he goes by Edward Terrence Manley. He is also a state executive with Boys and Girls Club, and he can have access to any child in the state of Nevada, he can walk onto any Washoe County School District campus, hand them a business card, and he has access to our children. He beat up his wife and infant son, he's charged with domestic violence battery, he pled guilty, his wife proceeded to get a protection order for, against him for her and their infant sons, who he continued to abuse and neglect, and he, again, is in this concealed database of domestically violent fathers in the state of Nevada. It is an illegal database, this is a statement from Julie Butler, she's a state of Nevada employee who oversees the database of criminals in the state of Nevada, and her exact statement is that the database is only as good as the information reported. So she's very aware that this concealed database of domestically violent fathers in the state of Nevada is not given to the public. This is Jackie and Neil Rombardo, they are the two employees from the state of Nevada, they were district, excuse me, in the Attorney General's office when Jackie Rombardo denied the children who were being abused by the state of Nevada because of their policy concealing the domestically violent fathers. These children were going to the state of Nevada Brian Nix Victims Crime Fund to get funding, and they couldn't, so they went to Jackie Rombardo, she was with the Department of Insurance, to get off the state of Nevada's insurance policy, get medical, get damages for, for medical injuries, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry that time expired, thank you very much. Ms. Batshielder?
Linda Burney.
Whichever you prefer.
I'll sit.
Okay, welcome Ms. Burney, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I was watching the news the other night and saw the person that presented the plans for the new schools, a district person who told me these bathrooms are to make the students safe. These new bathrooms will have completely enclosed stalls and be equipped with cameras in the sink areas so it will stop the bullying. So are they going to be hiring someone to monitor those cameras? If so, why can't cameras just be installed in the boys' or girls' bathroom, or both, if this is really an issue? Because now little boys and girls who have always been taught to use bathrooms marked for them everywhere, pretty much, now have to figure out how to keep the opposite sex from invading their space. What about girls in the 5th and 6th grade that start their periods? They have to have a receptacle to dispose of feminine products properly, and now boys will have access to these personal situations. Kids will be kids, and this is not the age to start pushing adult situations on them. I don't believe it has to do with bullying, I think it's just another way of sending mixed messages to our youth. I really think this should stop high school, or maybe middle school, it's plenty soon enough to be faced with these situations. Even then putting in a family or male/female bathroom with child changing stations would be more appropriate. I really think we need to stop these confusing agendas and get back to being paid for teaching the subjects that have worked for all of us for years. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Burney.
Jessica Levity.
Levity, is that the correct word?
Levity, yes.
Levity, thank you for being here, Ms. Levity, you have three minutes now.
Good afternoon, I am Reverend Jessica Levity with Alchemist Theater, and I'm here today to bring awareness to an issue you probably have no idea exists. This issue affects roughly 50% of students currently in school in Washoe County, and of that 50%, it greatly and disproportionately affects those living in poverty. The issue that I'm talking about is menstruation, yay! Specifically access to quality menstrual products that would alleviate the shame associated with both poverty and bleeding in our modern society. The issue comes to us in three pieces, stigma, access, and education. Imagine you're a young girl or trans men living in poverty and attending one of our 42 Title I schools, indeed started to bleed. Now, you have to clean yourself up, hope you didn't bleed through your pants, and walk to the nurse's office and ask for a pad. The nurse will then hand you this, an antiquated outdated granny pad, as the students call them, that feel like a diaper. Sympathetic smiles from the women on panel right now, thank you. These are literally the same pads they give women after they give vaginal births, I am not kidding. If we want young women to love their bodies and their periods, we have to give them access to products that have a chance of achieving that. These pads are not keeping girls in school, they're not, girls would rather stay home than wear one of these. My organization, Alchemist Theater, along with Northern Nevada Hope, spent the last month doing a pad drive called Pods for Pads, where we attempted to fill a large storage pod with pads for our local schoolchildren, despite many people telling us this issue was too controversial. We collected almost 20,000 menstrual products, 14,000 of which are modern quality pads. After talking to many young schoolgirls this last month, I realized that simply sending the girls in need home with these products is not enough. If we want to transform the culture of shame surrounding menstruation and poverty in our community, these products need to be available to the students directly, when they need them, for free, in the bathrooms. Not hidden behind brown paper bags, remember those? And in the nurse's office. We wouldn't expect kids to go to the nurse to ask for toilet paper, menstrual pads should be no different. I've sent emails and left voicemails with the school district asking what magic is possible that we can do with these 14,000 donations I've collected, but I've received no correspondence back. I'm sure you're all as shocked as I am to realize that this is a problem in our backyard, and someone on this board is eager with me to make change. So I'm just wondering if there's anyone that would be willing to meet with me outside of this meeting, or possibly if we can add an agenda item to our next meeting to talk about this, because I got 14,000 pads and I want to get them in our schools, thank you.
Thank you very much Reverend Levity.
Samantha Clements.
I went to the bathroom between 6th and 7th period where I discovered I had gotten my period. I went to my 7th period female teacher who said she completely understood and wrote me a pass to the nurse. The beginning experience was quite normal and mediocre. I asked if they had a hygiene product, and they said yes, you'll just need to wait until the one bathroom in the school nurse's office was free. This was the one bathroom that had feminine hygiene products within the school. As I waited, the situation became more urgent, but finally the bathroom was open. They did not show me where the pads were, they just pointed me to the bathroom. Inside was a machine in which you could pay 25 cents for a pad, and unfortunately I didn't have my wallet on me at the time. They had to open a locked drawer in which one remained, I thanked them and shut the door. When I opened the cardboard box, I saw that it was a thick, almost like a diaper-like pad, thicker than what I had ever used. My choice was to wear the diaper-like pad or free bleed in light pants, which was not an option. I literally waddled back to my classroom, and on the way back, I felt as though anyone and everyone could see my pad. I sat in my class next to my male lab partner who heard the crinkling of the pad I was wearing. This was not embarrassing because my male counterpart had heard the noise, it's embarrassing because I felt like I had to explain myself to someone who had no idea of the experience occurring. The fact of the matter is, I go to a school in which almost every girl has, is always prepared, and girls going to schools with few resources and low budgets have to experience the one encounter I had monthly. No girl should have to go through the discomfort of the poorly made and neglected necessity in schools. Overall, be it in a well-funded school like my own, or a school in an impoverished part of the country, all girls need normal feminine hygiene products to feel normal. As a subject that is still taboo in today's society, the secrecy is only exacerbated by having to ask an adult that may or may not experience a menstrual cycle for a feminine hygiene product. Girls need to feel as though this truly small issue is small, and they cannot effectively feel normal until this issue is addressed as a sense of normalcy and is placed in bathrooms for the girls experiencing something they have no control over. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Clements.
Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County citizen, grandma guardian. I am here on an assignment from the one that I guard, and as I was on the way out the door, I said, "Okay, what would you like me to bring up?", because I told him I would, he goes, "California just passed a law that you can have a generic gender." And I went, "Oh, no." I go, "Nevada, please don't follow in suit of California," and then I hear everything that's going on. So what I will do is that I have been given an assignment from certain people to stop getting in people's faces about the truth. So if I know that somebody's house is on fire, should I go, "Oh, come on, get out, there's a fire going on," or should I just say, "Fire"? So what we're doing right now is we have this whole agenda where male and female, God created them, male and female. I can tell who's a male and who's a female, hopefully you can tell which one I am too. Does it matter, you know, from Hillary Clinton, what difference does it make, right? The problem is, is there is such a thing as right and wrong, there's such a thing as true and false, and we can't make things just generic and on the board, because it will not be approved by the High Commander. And what I see is going on is that people try to take the truth and twist it to make everybody happy. Well, the truth of the matter is, is that most of us know we're male and female, and we're okay with it. So you have a small population coming in and going twisty, 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 to try to get it, you know, out of place. By the way, I talked to a male doctor of mine, and he told me that what the problems would be if they started assigning generic sex to individuals, how are you going to classify them when they come out? Because they know whether they're male or female, right? You know, how many men, how many generic people do you know that go through menopause? No, only females have those issues. There's a difference between male and female. And so let's take it to another level, let's say that we decide that there is such a thing as generic, and you can decide what you are, and you might be nothing. Well then, are you going to change your logo, because that looks to me like male and female? So we might have to throw in a third party there about that. The deal is, is that, oh, by the way, my grandson, at 12 years old, he accepted Christ, he has the Holy Spirit in him, at 12. I had tried to fit him into the Boys and Girls Club when he was little, he didn't want to go, and I always thought, well, I gotta force, you know, I gotta make him be like everybody else, because we gotta fit in, right? Now I realize with the evidence that I've gotten over the last few months, that there's a problem with Boys and Girls Club. Might be okay for some kids, maybe not for others, but the problem is, is that there's always going to be wolves in sheep's clothing out there. There's dupers, there's liars, there's people that present themselves in one way and they're another, and the thing is that people like us, we have to be able to identify who's telling the truth and who's not. So please, let's not turn into California Junior, okay? Let's keep it male and female, and let's treat them like they are. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Weatherly.
That's all I have at this time.
That's all the public comment that we have, did we miss anyone? We did not, thank you Ms. Batshielder, and thank you for everyone that took the time to come and share your concerns. With the Board of Trustees, we know that isn't always an easy thing to do, so we really do appreciate it. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 1.05, this is the Agenda Item to Adopt. The Agenda as presented, unless any colleague has any different recommendation, then I will accept the motion to that effect at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Kelly? Seconded by Trustee Frankel, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate so by seeing aye. Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried, let the record show, it is unanimous. All right, thank you everyone, we're going to go right to our action to adopt the Agenda, and we're going to start, we'll start with Trustee Frankel, because she never starts, because she's never usually on the end, so. And we'll just go right around to our student representative and circle the table.
Well, thank you President Taylor, I have been extremely busy in the last couple of weeks, had an opportunity to visit a number of schools and programs. I am pleased to say I went up to the Dean's Future Scholars Program up at the university and had a chance to sit with the mentors, former WCSD graduates, and I've learned not to use the word "former DFS students" because they're never former, they will always be, is what they told me. Had a great conversation with them about mentoring, about the needs of our students, they start mentoring kids in 6th grade, as we heard in a wonderful presentation, and the thing that I wanted to ask them more about was what they thought was the most important skill that they brought to mentoring our young people, to encourage them to go to college, and of course, these students get to participate in wonderful summer programs at the university. And their response was the ability to care and build relationships with these young people, and they spend much more time with them doing many other kinds of supports than just tutoring these students through school. So it's a great experience, and I want to thank Marius Garcia, who's our director of that program, for inviting me out, for taking the time and letting me spend some time with their, with her group. I visited six elementary schools, it's a very busy couple of weeks. I visited Echo Loader, Libby Booth, Roger Corbett, Catherine Dunn, Marvin Moss, and Bud Beasley, I was on my elementary, part of my elementary school tour, I have more than 30 of them, because I'm an at-large trustee, so I try to get to each of them at least once a year, and I want to thank all the principals and the staff. And what I saw in all of those schools was a lot of incredible learning, a lot of student learning with each other, a lot of emphasis on social emotional learning as a real fundamental foundation to student success in school. And I want to thank by name the principals, who do an incredible job, I know with respect to, I mean, all of them, but Loader, Booth, and Corbett are some of our most impacted students, impacted by poverty and homelessness, and they do so much more to provide support to those kids in an environment within which they can learn and be loved and cared for. Many of them have very challenging lives, and our staff go above and beyond for those kids. So Dina Charamella, Euan Fong, Denise Dufrain, Allison Fannin from Dunn, Colby Rorden from Marvin Moss, and Mary Ann Ariscotta from Buzz Beasley. I want to thank you all for having me interrupt your day and take me around to classes and spending time with staff and with the students. Had a chance to go to the Let's Go to College pep rally with Trustee Raymond, which was a lot fun at Alice Maxwell, and I thank TMCC for encouraging our young people to start thinking about their futures at such a young age, and start dreaming about where they want to go and where they want to be. I want to thank staff and the folks at Pine for a really energetic and well-run Spotlight on Success at Pine, and great kids who, I actually wanted to remind folks of that the selfless selfie, we ought to keep doing that, and I think we adults in this community need to always remember to take selfless selfies and start posting examples of when people are being selfless and helping others. I did get a chance to go to the area superintendent's meeting with Lauren Ford at Sparks High School on that great day when we announced their incredible graduation rate, and had a chance to recognize all the principals from the Sparks Vertical, the elementary school, and the middle school principals and their staff, recognizing that those kids wouldn't be walking across that stage if they hadn't started getting great education with supportive teachers in elementary school. And then last but not least, the Run for Education, which was a lot of fun, it was Sunday, and thanks to the Ed Alliance, to Shields and Channel 2 for sponsoring the event, and over 4,000 folks came out to participate, and we raised, what was it, $180,000 for student wellness in our district. So it was a great time with Trustees Taylor, Raymond, and Mayor. It was cold, a little chilly even before the sun came up, but I was really glad to be there. So that was a lot, but, and I couldn't say a lot about everything, but it was just a great opportunity to see a lot of the great work that's going on in many levels throughout the district.
Thank you Trustee Frankel, yes, you have been busy. Our student rep, Alex Chacon, tell us what's going on with the students.
Hi, well, a few weeks ago, five of the students from the Student Advisory Council got to fly down to the Facebook headquarters, and there was like a conference with students from all around the world, we had people from like England and a bunch of like European countries, so it was really interesting to just compare like the different climates all around the world and all around the nation, and we just learned about different leadership skills we could use, and how to improve the climate in our schools. And the past few Student Advisory Council meetings we've had, we've discussed the legal aspects of bullying, because we wanted to know about how we take care of bullies and how we take care of bullying situations, and we started coming up with some ideas for our anti-bullying campaign that we're going to be working on this year. So next meeting we're having, we're going to solidify kind of like the plan, what we want to do for the year, but some ideas that were thrown out are, we want to start like spreading more positivity in the schools, I know that one of the schools in the district is going to try to work with their art teachers to like start putting up murals in their hallways just to like, I don't know, spread positivity, it just creates like a nicer climate for all the students to look at. We want to start giving kids like more information as to like how they can access different resources to report bullying, because a lot of stu-, not a lot of students, but quite a few students don't know about all the resources that we have, so we want to focus on like better spreading that information and how they can reach out to their schools to talk about the bullying that is occurring. We want to potentially create ambassador groups in our schools, that was something that was brought up in the Facebook headquarters meetings we had. We want to go around to elementary and middle schoolers to start getting that awareness at a younger age, and we also would like to like create a video interviewing different students and just trying to share those anecdotes with the districts that students are more mindful of, the different words and actions they use on a daily basis.
Well, fantastic, a lot of great work, really a lot of, a lot of great work, I love the ideas. That's why you have to have students, because they know what's going to work for them, so. That's really good. We will jump around the table to Dr. Feenster.
Thank you President Taylor, the first thing I'd like to start with is, I went to visit a former student of mine from elementary, Lincoln Park, and she is now a counselor at O'Brien Middle School. I stepped in there, either at the right time or the wrong time, I don't know which one, but it made me realize just how much time, how much administrative time can go into one student who has issues at any given time of the day, and to look at the way the staff rallied to support that student was just remarkable, so kudos to the staff at O'Brien, because I, I've dealt with lots of students, but I could tell you, it was challenging, but they handled it with so much dignity, that kid definitely, definitely left with his dignity intact. But I, I have to say that I surprised the student, and she was so excited, she just, she saw me from the corner of her eye, and I saw it just the top of her head. I also got to meet an author, I think we have a lot of authors in our county, we need to spotlight these guys, but Jason is a 5th grade teacher, Alice Taylor, and just to look at his books and his artwork, it is just, it illuminates the classroom, and it reflects in the students' work, because just being there, I didn't even want to disturb them, but because they were so artsy and had all this art around them, you know, it was like I was part of the artwork, so they wanted to know everything about me, and it, I took the opportunity, introduced myself, and congratulated them on just being a part of this individual teacher's classroom, because he is phenomenal, he is phenomenal. And again, I hope we do something about some of the other authors we have in our district. I went over to, oh, and the principal is, she's brand new, she reminded me of myself when I was a first-year principal, Kate Ostill, Ostill, she is so, I want to say hyper, but she's just so excited, she, I mean, this girl is so excited, I could barely keep up with her, but it's, you could feel that it's, it's a reflection of the staff, and all the staff members are excited about this year, and what a good strategy, I said, "I like this strategy." So she just happened to be there, and we started to talk a little bit about the past, and I got to tell you, it all comes down to partnership, ownership, and believing in what you do. Jim, that guy was really skating, he was just walking on air, because he had that one strategy in place. He was able to visit a lot of the classrooms, which is so important, and he had Roberta Lawson there, former, actually, she's the former principal of that school, I just thought about that, am I correct? What, I mean, what a great strategy to do, to continue her on, and parents knew her, of course I knew her, she recognized me, and it was just a great time to visit and just to reminisce. So kudos to all those guys, they're doing a fantastic job, and thanks to Joe for going with me. But I also want to add that I also attended, is it the Cancer Support Group?
Something.
Yes, on behalf of people who are just diagnosed this year, I think, with cancer in our-
And survivors.
And survivors, in our, in our county, and I went and sat with Angie at her table, and it was just fun, and the best fun was that, that band, that band was great. I mean, you guys should have seen your president dancing up a storm, I mean, she's going to have to teach me that one day.
You didn't video, did you? Good.
But what a great time, and I just, I just think that that's such a great opportunity for maybe our, if we have, I know we have cancer survivors in our district, maybe we need to get behind that group a little bit, because they are phenomenal, and they could probably, we could probably partnership together, so that's about it, thank you.
Thank you Dr. Feenster. Trustee Mayor.
Well, like everybody else, it's a busy, busy, busy time, in fact, so busy, I don't know if I'm coming or going, but anyway, I want to echo the spotlight on success, I thought that was such a lovely thing, and what I look at that from a past and say, "Could you picture all these people at a board meeting and the things that we did to recognize their success and everything?" We couldn't do it, and Pine, that principal, made me tired just watching him. Oh Brad, boy, there's not a square in the linoleum that he didn't touch, he's quite the guy. But I want to thank everybody for putting that together, and before it, I attended a wonderful meeting at Pine before, the Student Advisory Committee, and Alexandria does a wonderful job at conducting meetings and being prepared, and it's just so neat that, and in fact, it's the only meeting I go to that gives me a refreshment when I'm on a diet, so. But, great job, and I think you've got a wonderful group, and everything's going great, and I just think you're a natural born leader, those kids listen to you and they step in tune right behind you. And then I went to the graduation announcement, which to me was a highlight in this community, and 84% of the graduating class, graduating, you know, if, if any of you, well, I can't say for myself, because I always get 100% of the vote, but any of you that would be happy to get 84% of the vote, and it's just wonderful, and I was doing some grocery shopping, which I hate to do anyway, but this lady that I've known for years caught me by the kumquats over there and said, "John, it's wonderful, wonderful," and she says, "What was the graduating rate when you took office?" And I said, "I don't know, I'll look it up," but it was 59%. So in seven years, we've gained that much, and that says it from Tracy Davis to us, to everybody connected with Washoe County School District. And it was just wonderful. And then I went to the area superintendent's meeting at Sparks High also after that, and they did a wonderful job. But I got in a few visits, I went to Alice Smith, and there's a teacher still teaching there that I hired her first year, and so she kind of took me around, but when I go to the schools, the principals are always busy, so I, and I like that, so the kids show me around, and out of the mouths of babe come words of wisdom, and it's just marvelous to see a young kid who's sitting next to me, and I was sitting there, and he unlocked the code for silent A, short A sound, cat, this is a 1st grade class, of course, but- But it's worth a million dollars to see his eyes go. Just, that's what it's all about. We're building futures for these kids. Then I went to Lemon Valley and the new principal, and I think he's from New Hampshire or by way of Rhode Island, by way of, and his wife's a associate or a professor at the University of Nevada. Just a dynamo. And then I did my yearly visit to Sparks High, but I'm going to have a few more. And it's amazing what these teachers do for these kids. And I was in one classroom and I sat there and I thought to myself, "They've got an individual plan for him." And during the intercession, he went down there and, and did eight plus on the computer and got two credits. And I says, "What did you do?" And boom, I should have never asked him because I'm, I'm still there. But it was so wonderful. And then I went to Kate Smith and you know, that little school is wonderful with, without the sixth grades not there anymore. But I want to tell you, we got to do something about this house, that playground is actually, you could say the play, the house is inside the playground because one fence comes down and the other fence takes off. There was a fire in this house. It's not boarded up or anything, so homeless people are in there, high school people are doing drugs in there and they're bugging our little children. Little children. Shouldn't happen. So, I'm working to try and get that place at least boarded up, if nothing else. Then I went to Robert Mitchell. Remember your past. That's, my children were fourth generation to go through Robert Mitchell and Sparks High. And I looked for my desk because my teacher painted all of them yellow. But they went through revitalization and they got tables now. But I wanted to say something about a kid at Robert Mitchell, and I see him in the neighborhood. And he's probably a handful. But the teacher knows how to handle that handful. She's got a little blanket and a pillow under her table over there and he starts yelling and screaming and she just goes, "Robert." And Robert, that's not his name, but Robert. And he goes and he lies down, takes a little nap, then comes up and he's just wonderful. That's a teacher. That's what it's all about. That's who we hire. And then I was at Elmcrest, who I just loved. And Silver Lake, former student of yours, Flora, Angela Flora, you hired her at Lincoln Park and I had her speech therapist as the principal there. And there had crazy hat day. And just unbelievable. One teacher had a hat with, made out of playing cards and all the kids wanted to look at it. Then I went to Desert Heights and I went to Sted. And of course, Sted's dear to my heart because that's where I met my wife teaching school. Look at this now. Wedding bliss. And I remembered the past, but we prepare for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mayor. I'm still stuck on that she grabbed you by the kumquats, but-
Well, those are those little fruits.
Just, oh, I'm just, I'm just saying. Just saying. Yes, just leave it at that. Yes, trustee Raymond.
It's a tough act to follow. In addition to all the events that, it has been busy that the other trustees have mentioned, let's go to college, spotlight on success, the grad rates announcement, run for ed. I toured Reno High School and got to see the We the People class in action, which was a lot of fun. And had a few different meetings with the city of Reno to continue our conversations around how the district and the city can enhance this year kids partnership program after, before and after school program. And then was invited to take part in a special education roundtable that included Dr. Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer, Jessica Medulla, the compliance administrator, and then one of our special education teachers, Jeannie Dwyer, who's actually at Reno High School. The roundtable was put on by the university and it's, it's a, basically a class for parents of students with special needs. And then there are some, there were some adult, adults with disabilities that are part of the class. And it's about advocacy and kind of what you can do to support your child or yourself. And it was a great experience. It was a roundtable set up, so we moved around the room. And it was a reminder for me that, you know, I think, and I think I would guess it would have been for the staff too in a lot of ways, that, you know, I think at the high level sometimes when we're talking about what we want to do, it does take time for all of that work to trickle down to the school level. And so, there, you know, were instances, stories that were shared that, you know, maybe weren't as positive, but there were a lot of great positive stories to share too. And it was, and those that, you know, I think the challenging situations, we are on the course of making changes to, to make sure that they, that, you know, those challenges are alleviated. So, it was very valuable experience for me and I hope that the parents that were there felt, you know, that I added something to it. I'm not sure what. And I also just wanted to say briefly that I know that this week and last have been parent-teacher conference weeks at the elementary schools. And I know just as a parent, how much I value that time with my students' teacher, but I also know and recognize how much work goes into that twenty-minute meeting. And I am so grateful for the principals and teachers in the district that make it a priority to meet with us. So, thank you to all of them.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. Clerk Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I visited Hunsburger Elementary School sixteen times last two weeks. Now, of course, that was mostly taking my son to school and picking him up. But each of those sixteen times and all of the other times that I go to Hunsburger, it's always nice to see a little snapshot of a school in action. You know, in the morning, I get to see the parents bringing their kids to, to school. And then when I pick them up towards the end of the day, I get to see the school starting to close down, but there's always activities going on. But one other thing that I did at Hunsburger was I went to a town hall that the school district hosted and it was to discuss the proposed middle school that's being planned for the Arrow Creek area. And a very well-attended town hall. There's probably sixty or seventy people there at least, maybe more. And there was, I think, only one or two people were just flat out against building a middle school in the Arrow Creek area. Almost everyone else was for it. Now, there were people that had some concerns about traffic and other things, but they all seemed to kind of agree that, you know, we needed this school there and it would help with overcrowding and other things. But there was also a lot of parents there that were just all for it. They, they love Pine Middle School, but they would be happy to have a middle school built right there closer to their home. And, and they all saw the, the need for it. And of course, building a, a middle school in Arrow Creek area would help to alleviate overcrowding at Pine and Dipoli and some other places. So, I thought the school district did a great job of hosting that, keeping the meeting, the town hall going, giving everybody a chance to kind of say their piece. And then after it ended, people could stay a little bit longer if they wanted to give some more comment or look at the proposed drawings of the school and, and that kind of thing. So, wanted to give the staff kudos for that. And then like my colleague said, you know, spotlight on success, that was a great ceremony. And then, yeah, the principal has just a tremendous amount of energy. I actually toured Pine Middle School with him before the spotlight on success and he has that same energy going from classroom to classroom. He probably visited like fifteen classrooms in fifteen minutes or so. So, he's, you know, Principal Boudreaux, he's been there for, I think, eight or nine years. Great principal. We like to hold on to our principal, the good principals for a long time like he is. So, I think that's it for me. Oh, and then I do want to apologize to my colleagues. I have to leave a little bit early for, for my son's parent-teacher conference. I have that in a little bit, but my heart will be here.
Thank you, Clerk Kelly. And just quickly for me, to spotlight, I want to just thank the staff. I mean, all of us talked about how nice it was. I want to thank the staff for all the work that they did. There's some things that were, that were some changes that I thought really lent to, to the, to the program and then actually having the physical program, I thought was, was really cool too. So, staff, thank, thank you for all of you, all that, all that everybody did to make that happen. The graduation announcement, what was, I mean, obviously that was exciting, but I, you know, I really thought one of the, the best things about it was that the principals were here in the front. And so, I'm, I'm hoping that it really made them feel more a, a part of it because they're, I know they're just the high school principals because the elementary school principals are a part of it and the middle school principals are a part of it as well. But I think to have the high school principals of all the high schools behind us, I thought that was fantastic. And I hope that they really felt even a greater sense of appreciation. So, whomever had that idea, great idea, thank you. I thought, I thought that was tremendous because it's really much more about them than it is about us. And then the, the run for ed is such, it's, it's such an activity. I was thinking, man, if I had kids this age, I'd bring them out just for the day to hang out. I mean, they had, there were drones flying around. There was, there was a climbing wall and it was music and dancing and there was some kind of soccer ball competition. I think Malina cheated and that's why she beat me. But, you know, I'm just go ahead and let it go. But yeah, yeah, but it was, but it was a lot of fun. I mean, I thought it was a lot of fun. So, certainly thanks to all of our corporate sponsors and the supporters that were there. From the, Atlanta, from Channel Two, he was out there dancing the whole time. I mean, it was all the mascots. It was just a lot of fun. It really, really was. So, thanks again to everyone that helps. Kendall and her staff and the ed alliance put on such an outstanding event. All right, now, I know you are not Superintendent Davis.
No, I'm not.
No, but Deputy Superintendent Christian McNeil should tell us where the superintendent is and update us.
Well, I have some big shoes to fill for today. So, thank you very much, Madam President. From the superintendent's report, we are extremely thrilled with our graduation rates. We had eight schools over ninety percent graduation rate. Six of those schools are going to receive banners. And so, Superintendent Davis and I will go out to those schools and we'll present them banners. And then some of those schools actually received banners from last year. And so, then they will get a little tag as far as what the graduation rate is for this coming year. So, that was great news. And then also for the run for education, I want to throw a shout out to Partner in Crime, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, Ms. Irene Payne, for finishing the ten K. I was only able to do the five K, but you know, it's all in the name of fun and for students. And then finally, we're working with the Nevada Department of Education. We were notified as far as our rising star schools. And so, Superintendent Davis and I and the area superintendents will be working with those schools and making sure that their school performance plans are in order. They have great dynamic principals and there's a lot of work to do around those schools.
Don't you show other colleagues where the superintendent is available?
The superintendent, so Tracy Davis, she is doing a couple of things. So, she's actually back in Washington DC. She is speaking about social emotional learning with several of our United States senators. And so, she's testifying today. And then she will also be doing some parent-teacher home visit meetings because she sits on that, on the National Board for Parent-Teacher Home Visits. So, two great causes and are very near and dear to her heart.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. We'll go on. Thank you to all of our colleagues for all the, all the tremendous work you continue to do in the classrooms and all the visits and with the Student Advisory Board. I mean, the tremendous, all of them, really, really, really tremendous work being done on behalf of the students in the district. I didn't do the ten K or the five K. I did the okay. But it was good. You did that, yeah, we did that together. We did that together. We did that together, but it was okay. It was okay.
I did it there.
Right. We saw you, John.
I do want Brad back.
All right, on to agenda item three point zero, three point zero one. This is a approval of our consent, of our consent agenda. These are consent agenda items three point zero two through three point one two. We do have public comment on agenda item three point zero seven, so I'll pull that from the consent agenda and we'll consider that one separately. So, other than the agenda item three point zero seven, is there the desire of any colleague to, to pull one for, for deeper discussion or questions? And if not, I will entertain a motion to approve agenda items, three, agenda items three point zero two through three point zero six and then three point zero eight through three point twelve.
I move to approve consent agenda items three point zero two through three point zero six and three point zero eight through three point one two.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second and a discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. So, now we'll go on to agenda item three point zero seven and we will hear the public comment at this time. We'll ask staff on that agenda item to be prepared to discuss if necessary as well.
Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know exactly how to approach this. I think I'll do it from the Apostle Paul standpoint. I knew a man once that went to third heaven, right? So, we'll do this in the third party. Let's say that I knew somebody once that was expelled from Excel Christian School for saying something wrong, but the people at that school chose not to reveal that information to the Guardian because it would put them in a bad light. So, the fact of the matter is that it had to do with saying something, not a weapon. All right? The same person might have had some issues at another school. By the way, I do want to say thank you publicly to Principal Stacy Sanini at Sparks Middle School. She, she is an amazing, caring woman. But what happens is if there's any problems with a child, they're slotted into a behavioral situation. If you don't act this way or say things like this or say things like this, you are slotted that there's a problem with you. So, the uniqueness of the children has been nullified. All right? You, if you take a look at, at actions, then I can see that. But if you're looking at what they say, you're making some evaluations. So, I considered this about talking to a psychiatrist, but instead I would rather talk to a man of God, okay? A pastor that knows the Lord. But that's not good enough, that they don't qualify for helping. It has to be a school-certified psychiatrist or they don't carry any weight. And what I'm going to say is that we've got this secular idea of how things should work and what we're going to do is hire somebody that may not even have the answers. He might not even know what the difference is between right and wrong, what, what good and evil is. But he's paid to do something because he has a degree. And so, I oppose spending money for a psychiatrist when we can't even allow the Bible into school. You know, it was removed from, in the sixties, right? Do you know when the country started taking a topple? In the sixties. You know, there's such a thing as positive attitude and everything, which is good, but unless it's got a foundation of truth and it's realistic, it doesn't mean anything. And so, all I'm trying to do is say, people, please, let's bring God back into the schools. Let's, don't elevate psychiatrists above somebody that will actually tell you the truth from, from their spirit and from their heart. Let's spend money in a, in a positive way that tells kids the truth, that will identify them as being unique individuals. Don't put them into a box. Don't put them into a slot. Don't say, unless you say these things in this way, we're going to toss you out. Okay? And I do like the fact that, that Sparks Middle School, they have a staff there, at least at the top, she does care about those kids and she's willing to identify. Did you know that sometimes really brilliant kids don't act like everybody else? They don't go to sports events necessarily and they think they're odd not to do that, but they think things through. And I would like to see an elevation of that type of children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Did we miss anyone? That's any other public comment?
No.
We're bringing the discussion back to, to the board. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item three point zero seven at this time.
Move to approve.
It's been moved by trustee Kelly, seconded by trustee Frankel. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. We're going to go on now to agenda item four, four point zero one. This is our update of fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget, including our status, the planning process, methods for community input, and our comprehensive annual financial report. This is for information and discussion. This is no action item. And then our presenters before us, I'll just hand it over to our CFO, Tom Zesinski.
Thank you, President Taylor. Deputy Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, and our student representative for the record, I'm Tom Zesinski, Chief Financial Officer. And so, what I'd like to do is give you a, a board budget and finance update. And so, the first thing I wanted to do, as you all know, I'm- And so what I'd like to do is give you a, a board budget and finance update. And so the first thing I wanted to do is you all know I'm retiring from the school district. Yay, that's me. And so we have our new CFO with us today and his name is Mark Mathers. So I think I'll just stop there and let Mark say a few words and say hello to each of you.
President Taylor, members of the board, Mark Mathers. Uh, great to be here. Big shoes to fill, obviously, but I'm excited to be here. I know some of you from my time at Washoe County as the budget manager. Prior to that, I was the Chief Deputy State Treasurer for the state of Nevada for about five years. So again, very excited to be here. I know there's lots of hard work to be done. Um, I'm excited to join the team. I've heard great things about the board, seen great things from the board and staff. Look very much forward to it. Really appreciate the board's embracing of a data-driven quantitative approach. And so that excites me. Um, so I'm happy to be here and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, just on behalf of all of us, just we want to say thank you. We're excited to have you. We're excited about your background and, and what you bring. So we expect you to fill his shoes with no problem at all. No, Tom's been great, but it's, uh, it's really exciting to have someone of your caliber to join our team. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Taylor. So, um, I'm going to be here for another month and, uh, making a nice transition of, you know, bringing Mark on board and he started yesterday. And so, um, he got to sit through two ratings calls with us yesterday and got to meet all the staff. And so we'll spend a month together and I'll pass the torch on and, uh, but we're in good hands. Mark's got a lot of capabilities and he's got a great team and he's got a great board and he's got a great superintendent and a great district to work with. So all that good stuff. Uh, moving on in this presentation, I wanted to give you an update that the comprehensive annual financial report, or the CAFR, um, is nearing completion. You will, uh, be receiving it by the October 31st. We'll have our exit conference with the superintendent next week. Take it to the audit committee, I believe November 9th, and then bring it to you for final acceptance on November 14th. So well on the way to completing the audit and, and, uh, good work there. No issues, no significant issues that I can see today, but they're still finalizing it. So I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. Wanted to circle back around from our last budget workshop with you to let you know that we have engaged with the communications department and we are working on budget surveys. And also working on an interested party, uh, budget presentation for you to work with us to go to constituent meetings and, and to take out to all of our schools. That, uh, just want to let you know, we have followed up on that conversation from our budget workshop with you last time. Also part of the, the process from last time, you wanted to have us adopt some policies. We're in the process of developing some of those. We can't do all of them. As we pointed out, the, the implementation of the best practices for school budgeting from GFOI will take us a little bit of time, but we will bring, bring forth some policies and, uh, Chief of Staff David Lasik was going to update you on the timeline for, for bringing forward, uh, policies.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board. David Lasik, Chief of Staff. Um, we will be bringing hopefully first drafts of, um, some of the budget policies to the budget, or to the policy committee in February. So we have two November and December policy committees coming up and they're both already slated with lots of stuff, um, coming forward. So we're working, um, with the business office right now on getting a lot of that done. Um, and my fearless Lisa Scurry is busy, um, with updating a lot of the policies. So hopefully we'll have first drafts, um, in February for you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Um, if we can click onto the next slide. So the next area of work on the budget is we are actively preparing materials to work with leadership team and, uh, departments and schools to, uh, form the budget reduction ideas to address the, the 22 to $28 million shortfall deficit that we're looking at for fiscal year 19. So well on the way to doing all the things that we've talked about. So just, uh, reminding you of that work. Also wanted to point out that, uh, again, we're adopting the, uh, the, the, uh, GFOA's best practices for school budgeting. And so as part of that process, Mike Schroeder, our budget director and Jeff Bazoo, who were part of our, uh, communication with you last time, are actually flying on to Chicago to attend a conference associated with that. So getting some in-depth training in person, uh, with, with, with the GFOA on that. And then, uh, Mark is gonna, gonna go to the Council of Great City Schools where we annually attend the CFO conference there. And one of the things the, the board asked for was a, a budget review. So we'll work with Bob Carlson and team to, to start to make that arrangement as well. So that's a very quick update today, very high level, but to wanted to just demonstrate to you that we are continuing to do the work that needs to be done to, to continue to, to address the fiscal year 19 budget. So with that, would it be glad to entertain any questions or comments that you may have.
Yes, I trust, trustee Kelly?
Yeah, uh, just a quick question, Tom. Um, so the news broke a few days ago that 18, um, may be off or maybe up for a $27 million tax refund. Have you heard anything about, um, anything more about that and how it could impact our school district?
Yeah, um, it's, it's an issue that affects local, it's a Washoe County issue. Uh, any, any entity in Washoe County that collects sales tax would be a part of that refund. Uh, the good news for the school district is if, as you've heard Mike and I speak in the past, that there's a hundred percent guarantee on, on LSST that that portion of the sales tax that relates to the school district. So if it comes in under, then the state makes, there's a guarantee that the state would make up the difference. So it's actually the state that would be on the hook for the school district's portion of that, that refund. And it's still being determined as to what duration of time that that refund would be paid back. It could be a, a period of one or up to three years because that, that, that situation took place over a three-year period of time. Uh, some additional good news, it, it took place prior to the implementation of WC1. So there's absolutely no impact on WC1. And again, the school district's portion of that would be an issue, would be part of our distributed school per pupil funding. And the state would make up that difference. And so, uh, the school district, uh, in theory, based on laws and rules, should not be impacted by that. So very good question. Thank you, uh, trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Clerk Kelly. Other discussion or questions? Yes, Dr. Feenster?
Yes, um, Tom, I had a question. I was wondering if, uh, Mark felt comfortable with the timeframe and a timeline regarding the transfer? And I, I don't think I caught all of it because it's a huge task. You guys know that. And I'm just wondering if that's enough time for him to grasp everything, even though I know you'll be available by phone. I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Well, I'll just, I'll, I'll start and I'll turn the microphone over to Mark. So Superintendent Davis asked me to stay on it. I was going to leave at the end of this month, but she asked me to stick around for at least a month, uh, to, you know, spend time with Mark. We've engaged for the last two days. And so I think we'll go through the month and see how things go and, uh, and we'll recalibrate from there. But, uh, from my perspective, that's where we're starting and, and I'll let maybe Mark speak a little bit. And I wish Superintendent Davis was here from her perspective, but we're, we're going to make it work, I think, at the end of the day, one way or the other. That, that would be my point of view. So.
Trustee Feenster, I appreciate the concern. I really do. Um, I've never had a situation before where I overlapped my predecessor's time at an agency. So it's a, I think it's a great thing that the school districts managed to do. I certainly feel comfortable with, uh, kind of shadowing Tom for the next month and a half, basically. And, you know, I'm fortunate to have a really strong management team in the business and finance area to lean on. And all those folks have been here for quite some time and they'll be training me certainly as well, but I know we've got a lot of work to do in the development of the budget. And so it's one of those where I've got to dive in. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for asking that.
And I would echo what Mark, uh, Mark has said here. He's got a great team to lean on. I, I, as much as I'd like to think I did all the work, I didn't do all the work. It was, it was the team that did all the work, you know, it just, uh, I, I provided the leadership and, and they did the work and we all, and we all worked with you to make it happen. So, and I've known Mark over the years. It's, it's not a, a recent introduction. I've known Mark over the years. He's very capable, very qualified, done great work at, uh, Washoe County and this, at, at the state treasurer's office prior to that. So he's coming in with over 20 years of governmental experience. So we, we've got a good one. So, uh, we'll be very happy. And I'm, I, I, this organization is near and dear to my heart. I started in kindergarten here and got to be the CFO. So, uh, I, I will be available to, to help out if needed. So, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Raymond.
This is in regards to the new kind of budget plan that we're looking at. Um, I realized in trying to explain the new process to someone that maybe I didn't totally understand, uh, or know how detailed we were going to be getting with it. And maybe you don't at this time know what that looks like either, but where I got tripped up is so when we talk about looking at programs and getting the, and, and that might be part of the survey results sort of mentioned here. Is there some threshold of like how small of a program we would look at? Are we, um, do we know what that might include in terms of the breakout or what, um, when would we know kind of what that list looks like? So if, when I think of programs, like I would think of a department that then is, you know, um, operating or out in the district doing different programs, like parent university is a program to me, or, um, SEL might be a program to me. So will we be seeing budgets around those types of programs? And again, is that all figured out yet and?
The last part of your question, no, it's not all figured out yet. So, but, so, uh, i- if you think back to prior year as an example, I mean, we provided you a fairly thick binder that kind of takes you basically through every academic operational program in the district. So, uh, as part of balancing last year's budget deficit, you know, we, we compiled a list that got you $47 million worth of solutions to balance a $40 million problem. So we'll go back and look at all those programs. Again, I think we tend to look at the, the, the larger programs because we're trying to maybe get to the solution quicker. But I think, you know, we're working closely with Deputy Superintendent McNeil, uh, you know, Chief Operating Officer Pete H. Art, uh, and, and Don Huckabee, uh, and from Human Resources and David Lasik on our financial review committee to, to, to look at the, the big picture. And then, you know, once we've got that group, you know, on path with a plan, we'll take it to leadership team and then we'll dive deeper into those areas. So, I mean, we'll look at all the programs and the concept is return on investment. What programs do we have? Which ones are giving us the best bang for our buck? Um, you know, we've got a, we've got to look at all aspects of the school district. And again, the problem's not quite half as big as what it was last year. So that's great news, but we still have to, we still have to balance the budget at the end of the day. And again, we set a goal, the board helps us set a goal of having a structurally balanced budget within three years. So my general perception is that we'll solve half of that problem through savings as we've done in prior years. Savings aren't the best thing to balance the budget, but it, it's better than cutting something if, but you, you want to get to sustainability. And so we'll bring back some solutions that are cuts like we did last time. And they're painful and they're difficult, but we have to have a sustainably balanced budget. And, uh, so we're working on looking at the programs. I, I think we'll look at everything, but you tend to look at the bigger things first to try and get to the, to the solution quicker. But that doesn't mean we ignore things. We've just got to, we have to take a comprehensive look and work with the people. As much as the finance people would like to think they know how everything operates in the district, we don't. So that's why I have to lean on folks like, uh, Dr. McNeil and Pete H. Art, you know, and all of their respective department leaders. And have them tell us what works best. And, you know, we can throw ideas out to them, but it's, it's, it's about compiling ideas. But again, it's your direction. We're starting five months earlier than we did last year. So that means we're, we're that much further along. And, uh, we'll, we'll get there. And, and the goal is to bring you a list by February, as we talked about in the last budget hearing and, um, and, and get that in front of you and, and, and do what we legally have to do, which is to balance the budget. So.
And the program budgets then, and I'm sorry if I'm just not remembering this from last year, but that would include the staff, the hours, the training and travel, the, all of the components of the whole, uh, department that runs that program.
You did well. You remembered all that stuff. Yes.
So the new element of this really is the, the return on investment piece?
Yeah, just trying to drill down to say, okay, we've got this program. This, I don't want to pick on a particular one because somebody's going to think I'm picking on a program. So I'm just going to make it generic. But, you know, we're going to look at the aspects that you just laid out, the personnel cost and, and the operating budgets of, of, of programs, whatever it happens to be. And then work with, with, you know, the leaders of those areas to say, all right, we're going to probably have to give up something. If you had to give, you've got, I'm just picking a number out of this guy, 10 programs here. If you had to give up one or two, which ones would you give up? You know, based on your, which ones are doing the most for you? This one helps us, you know, move the graduation needle 10 points. This one maybe only moves at one point. Uh, you know, whatever it happens to be. Operationally, we've got to say, you know, we may have to give up something. What, operationally, what do we have to give up? Something within the business offering, something within human resources. You know, this budget deficit touches everybody in the district. So again, it's just evaluating program by program, department by department with all the things that you just talked about. And then bringing back to you our best recommendations as to here, we presented you the problem and any good leader is always going to say, here's the problem. Here's the, here's our recommended solutions and then work with you to, and our, and our best recommendations to prioritize that list. So hopefully I'm addressing your question.
And that's the February.
That's in February, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. Trustee Frankel?
Yes, and, and thank you both and welcome, Mark. Thank you for being here. Um, and one of the things to sort of follow up to trustee Raymond's question, as you responded and you were talking about ROI, which is really the unique piece. And the thing I'm most interested in is what is that measure we're using to talk about that return? And you mentioned one metric being the graduation rate and the challenge of identifying which programs are moving that dial. But I also am interested, I'm going to be interested in knowing more about what are those criteria that we're using to determine that return? Is it graduation rates? Is it reading levels? Is it? How, how are we evaluating and what criteria we're using? Because I think you talked about the, you know, which ones move that dial? To have as data-driven an approach as we can to justify those decisions, I think is the most important thing. And I think you both know this, but I just want to reiterate that has consistently been my, my question and my concern. And I'm hopeful that February will give us enough time to understand all of those and be able to have input into that as well, because I think that's going to be an important piece for us to understand as we make these decisions, as we, we, you can listen to your recommendations. Um, and to make sure that our criteria and your criteria are aligned. I think those are the most important, uh, questions that I have and concerns that I have going forward. But thank you for your work. I know this is a big process.
Thank you. Thank you for that, trustee Frankel. Any other discussion from the board? Okay. I think you get to stay.
Yep.
And I don't know if Mark is staying with you, but it's, that's up to you too. But we, we, we thank you for that and look forward to continuing work on the budget. I think that's, that's really good discussion and we're starting earlier and can get into the return as, as we know we all need to do. We're going to move on now to Tom, you get to, both of you, Tom and Mark, we have a two for right now. Agenda item 5.02. Uh, 2, 2, 01, excuse me. Action to adopt the board resolution, uh, 17 dash 010. This is our school improvement bond resolution authorizing really the issue of up to the 200 million that we, uh, really decided how to spend on our last meeting. And we'll just turn it right back over here to, uh, to Tom to take us through this.
Thank you, President Taylor, Deputy Superintendent McNeil and members of the board and student representative, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer with our new, uh, Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers with me. And also in the audience, Kendra Folet from Swinside and Stern or Sherman and Howard as bond counsel. This action item was actually something that we could have put on consent, but given that this is the first time that we've ever issued WC1 bonds, I wanted to give the board another opportunity to, to have a discussion dialogue around this final resolution. Um, I noted in our previous board item that, uh, we had bond ratings calls yesterday with Moody's and Standard and Coors. And so we're optimistic that those calls went well and, and we're working through that process. So we're marching towards issuing these bonds on November 24th, specifically $200 million worth of bonds to build the two, uh, middle schools and elementary schools approved by both the capital funding protection committee as well as this school board. So with that, I'll just stop there and ask if there's any questions.
Any questions to issue the bonds to get the money that we spent two weeks ago? Okay, I, I'm going to take that as a no. All right. So let's go ahead and move forward then. I'll entertain a motion at this time, if that is the pleasure of the board, to adopt the board resolution 17 dash 010. Yes, sir, trustee mayor?
Move for approval.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee mayor and seconded by trustee Feenster that the board does adopt resolution 17 010. This is 2017C School Improvement Bond Resolution authorizing the Washoe County School District to issue up to 200 million in general obligation revenue bonds. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Is that an aye, trustee mayor?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you, sir. Uh, opposition? Seeing none. The motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Okay. So why, and why don't we go ahead to our next resolution? And, and I know whenever you need to leave, uh, clerk Kelly, you please go ahead and do so. Uh, we'll move on to agenda item 5.02. Uh, this is, uh, to adopt and action to adopt if the board so desires, uh, bond resolution number 17 dash 011. Now this is, uh, 2017D refunding the bond, bond resolution. And once again, we'll turn it over to our CFO.
Thank you, President Taylor, Deputy Superintendent McNeil, members of the board and student representative. Same cast of characters up here. Again, Tom Szysinski for the record, Chief Financial Officer. This is, uh, a part of the same bond issuance. This is a refunding of some existing bonds that we have. It's estimated to generate about two and a half million dollars worth of, uh, savings by refunding those bonds. I always like to put it in context. If you refinance the mortgage on your house and got a better interest rate, you lower your payment and save money over time. No different for the school district when we issue debt. If we get an opportunity to, to, to lower our interest rate and, and, and get a lower interest rate, it saves the district money. In this case, again, estimate is, uh, two and a half million dollars of savings, um, for this refunding. And, uh, and this is the resolution associated with that. So with that, I'd entertain any questions and turn it back over to you. So with that, I entertain any questions and turn it back over to you.
Are there any questions on the reissuing of the bonds? And, and Tom talked again about it really being like refinancing. Well, what, what are projected savings from that?
$2.5 million for refunding these, these existing outstanding bonds.
All right, fantastic. Any discussion, questions for our two CFOs? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain the motion at this time, if that's the pleasure of the board. And where's Katie when we need her, right?
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt board resolution 17-011, 2017D, School Improvement and Refunding Bond Resolution authorizing the Washoe County School District to issue general obligation bonds to refinance outstanding bonds for an anticipated savings of $2.5 million.
It's been moved by Trustee Raymond and seconded by Trustee Frankel. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to take a quick break here. We, we do have Agenda Item 5.04 and there was a commitment by one of our colleagues because there was some interest that we won't see that until four o'clock. So we'll take a little break here and then come back and take on Agenda Items 5.03 and 5.04. So we are in recess for, I'm going to say 10 minutes because I know that will be 15. All right, everyone, we'll go ahead and convene. We extended that to make sure we got closer to four o'clock. Our commitment was on four o'clock on Agenda Item 5.04, but we wanted to make sure if there was anyone anymore. We know we do have a few items of people that have are interested in public comment on Agenda Item 5.03, and we want to make sure that opportunity is available for anyone that may be interested. So we will reconvene our meeting and jump right into Agenda Item 5.03. Again, as a reminder, Trustee Kelly, Court Kelly, had a, an appointment with a family appointment. Actually, it was a teacher visit with his son. So how can he not leave to go to a teacher visit with his son? And so we'll, we'll continue on. We, we still have a quorum, so that's wonderful. Okay, so now Agenda Item 5.03, discussion and presentation to the Board of Trustees on Washoe County School District's head lice procedures. This is for presentation and for discussion only. I don't see Dr. Green, but I do see Victor, Executive Director. Victor, come on up. And I don't know if Dan's going to be here with us. Oh, Dana. It says Dan. You're not Dan?
Typo.
Typo, Dana. Dana, welcome Dana.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, if not JJ will help you.
Mr. Shabandi, I'm going to turn it over to you. Okay, for the record, Victor Shabandi, Executive Director, Student Services.
For the record, I'm Chief Nurse and Director of Student Health Services, Dana Valchunas, RN.
Fantastic. So President Taylor, Deputy Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, Student Representative Cohen is, how do you say? Shaco, sorry. We are here today to present to you about lice and what our procedure is in Washoe County School District. So we're going to begin and can I borrow that clicker?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. So we're going to begin with an overview of what the presentation is going to cover this afternoon, and that is really information from the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA and other health agencies about lice such as the IPM and AAP that you'll hear about today. You're also going to hear about the recommendations from a committee that was formed in 2011 that really looked closely at what a potential policy should be here in Washoe County. And we will also review kind of what the current practices are in Washoe County School District, so all of you are aware of that. And then we will look at really what the Department of Student Health Services will do moving forward, and we are recommending just upfront that we're going to form another committee so that we can take a revised look at what is currently happening in our schools. So with that said, so information from the AAP and others is that head lice-
I'm sorry, who's the AAP? Would you mind?
Not at all. It's the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Head lice should not be considered as a medical or a public health hazard and that head lice are not known to spread any disease and that the Centers for Disease Control, the AAP and the National Association of School Nurses all recommend that students should not be excluded from school for having nits and that the management of head lice should not disrupt any student's educational process. The AAP recommends that since a child with an active head lice infestation has likely had the infestation for a month or more, by the time it is discovered poses very little risk to any other students and they should definitely stay in class and in school. Dana's going to talk you through a few of the next couple of slides.
There are certainly, oh, for the record, I'm Dana Valchunas, Director of Student Health Services. There are certainly challenges. I think one of the main challenges I see as calls come across my desk is the visceral reaction that parents and we all have to the thought of having a bug crawling in hair. There's a fear factor that the head lice could become worse and the child could walk around and have a infestation of eggs and lice. It's creepy to talk about, it's creepy to think about, strong ick factor. And from that come a lot of myths that people have. I receive phone calls from parents periodically who have concerns and a couple of things I find is that they are misinformed about how lice is spread, the consequences of lice, where lice came from and what to do about it. So really, it's kind of educating parents, one parent at a time in these cases. There's a lot to go and it was, you know, it was a tough one because I felt like somebody gave her lice. Who was that? How did she get it? And it was upsetting when I first encountered it. The kind of, the, the approach that parents are, the emotional reaction parents have is get the kid out of there. So science does not support that, but nonetheless, it's a tough one to overcome when you have the perception that the child next to me, or next to my child, gave my child lice. I want him out of there. Exclusions do interfere with education. We know this. Studies have supported that. Information from the Center of Expertise for School, and I have to look up what IPM stands for. This is an EPA study and position statement, and IPM stands for Integrated Pest Management. These are entomologists. These are people who love studying bugs and they've come up with some policies and procedures around head lice. So the myths that are, are common are the fact that the person is unclean. So an unclean child sat next to my child in school and that's how my child got head lice. This is mythology. I've had parents argue with me insisting that lice can jump, skittle, hop, fly. We know this isn't true. They don't have the equipment to do any of it. They don't have little jumper feet. They don't have wings. They cling to the hair shaft. They don't go, they cannot live off the human head for any period of time. They need 98.6 to survive. They need a blood source. I know, I'm sorry, I'm being kind of icky here, but they do not infest buildings. So I've known cases where parents spray their household with fungicides and, I mean, lice icides and other poisonous chemicals, which is a very big overreaction. There's a myth that they're readily shared on combs, brushes and hats. While it can happen, if somehow a lice finds its way stuck to a hat, it is very unlikely to be spread that way. Typically, kids gather around, they stick their heads together, three to 11-year-old is this age band, and they tend to share lice that way by just direct contact with heads. Sometimes in a household, slumber parties, close ongoing contact within families, these are places that kids acquire lice. They do not burrow under skin. They cling to the hair shaft. They are not resistant to all treatments. There is some literature showing there is some resistance, but it is not a common thing. The creams and things available on pharmacies are very effective at killing lice. And finally, the myth is kids should not come to school with lice or nets when in fact the national standards say otherwise. Peer-reviewed sources are very clear, kids should never miss school. I get across my desk, no concern about hantavirus, pertussis, MRSA, flesh-eating staph bacteria, viral meningitis, which we currently have in some schools. I get zero phone calls about that and yet I get calls about lice. So high concern, really where it's not appropriate. And I think this really speaks in a compelling way that we have an obligation as a district to educate stakeholders and parents about this situation so that they have realistic information and they're not dealing in a fear factor and we're not driving policy by emotions and fear. Okay, the goals for lice management in schools. This came from the committee that met in 2010 and 11. It consisted of several groups of people inside and outside the district, which Victor will talk about later. The goal, the goals that the committee emphasized and we have implemented, education of parents in the community, identify, confirm and contain infestation. There are things the schools can do to minimize spread. That is clear in the policy. It is not a policy that says you turn a blind eye. It is a proactive policy that says what can we do as a school district to help reduce the spread of lice? We want to partner with parents in doing that. We want to prevent overreactions like use of chemicals. Custodians do get phone calls to come and fumigate the whole school because a child has head lice. That is a myth and it's dangerous. We want to maintain confidentiality and privacy because there is some stigma attached to this and we want to minimize school absence. We want every child by name and grade to graduation. That means attending school every day and not excluding kids for minor things that are unnecessary.
Turn it over to- The committee in 2011 was made up of two parents, two area superintendents, the Washoe County Health District official, an elementary teacher, an elementary principal, Washoe County School District Communication Staff, school nurse, student health services director, and they met six times to help create the current strategy that we use or procedure that we use in our schools today. The current strategy today, students with lice will, will not be excluded from- We really wanted to send a, a specific head lice notification letter home to families of students who have been identified with lice. So we do that as well.
Okay, current practices. This is a five-page procedure based on the committee that met in 2011. They looked at the scientific literature, they got input from stakeholders and others. And what came out of that was a multi-step procedure for having schools partner with parents to reduce the spread within schools and to allow parents access to the products they need and the chemicals they need to get rid of the lice and understand how to do that. Okay, so we also, as a department, identified additional procedures. So what it boils down to is there is a school support team approach. So it's a, a team approach to a child with head lice. If the parent doesn't have the means to treat it, they can't get off work to do the labor intensive work it takes. And we developed a checklist for those students who return the following day without having been treated, because we do ask parents to treat the child in time for the next day of school. Most parents will do that, no problem. There are those who have barriers and so we have a checklist. It's got about 15 items on it where the school nurse will call the parent of the child who is not treated and say, what can we do to help you get treatment? So it's not an option not to treat really. It's a matter of saying, what are the barriers and how can we remove or reduce those barriers so treatment can happen? There is a procedure, management of head lice, that outlines all of these steps. These steps include when a teacher or other person who knows the child reports the child seems to have a lot of scratching on their head, they may have lice, that child is sent to the health office. The school nurse or trained person does check the head. If the lice are found or nits are found, the, the nurse will check the siblings of that child, because again, it's a family issue usually. And then if lice are found, that parent receives a phone call and a letter as well. They have the option of picking the child up at that time because it's going to take some hours to get rid of the lice or picking the child up at the end of the day. The other parents in the classroom are notified as well. They, they're asked if they choose to, to check their own child's head. And then the child is checked again when they come back the next day. They have to go through the health office. If treatment has not been done, again, that checklist is, is reviewed by the school nurse asking the parent, can you afford it? Have you checked other family members? There's a whole series of things that have to happen to make sure this child doesn't have another case of lice. Okay, so the procedure describes the process in which Student Health Services supports the inclusion of the students and their academic achievement with verified case of head lice while implementing standard control measures. So there are all kinds of measures. The nurse will also, in collaboration with the principal, give a talk to the kids about how they can be self-advocating because that child is doing something to acquire lice. So if you can talk to a nine-year-old about what not to do, you probably won't see another case of it. More importantly, those measures that are emphasized in an education of the kids, say, don't share cups, don't share personal items because you can get sick from that, not only head lice, but things that are more serious. So it's a bigger comprehensive message than just focusing on lice. Current practices, we must ensure equal access for all students. There's an international organization that says it is a violation of a student's civil rights to bump them out of class for something that is not a health problem such as lice. Students should not be bullied or targeted for any reason. Teachers are asked to be discreet and to just say, I need you to go to the health office. And they can make a confidential call and say, here's what I'm looking for. When I was a school nurse, we called them snowflakes and we'd just kind of say, a lot of snowflakes here. And my aide would say, oh, that's Mount Everest in here. Just kind of code talk so that nobody had any idea what we were talking about. They, we've had parents demand that a child with head lice not be allowed to ride the bus. This is an overreaction, fear-driven. So in Washoe County School District, they are allowed to ride the bus because lice don't cling to bus seats. They have no ability to cling to material or textiles or vinyl seats or anything like that. And again, we talked about discretion and confidentiality. Okay, we want to teach teachers what to look for. Scratchy heads can happen. Most of the time, lice are not detected. I would say there's probably a lot more kids with lice going to school than we ever know about, because typically by the time they're itchy, they've got quite a head load of lice and it's pretty easy to see when you glance down at their head. In cases where a student has chronic and a persistent case of head lice or nits, the school nurse is to personally contact that parent and say, what can we do to help you? And go through that checklist.
We, we know that this is concerning to many families and we intend to form a new committee. And that new committee will look at revising our current strategy, revising our current procedure, and, and we will go from there. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that. Trustee Mayor, I see you leaning in.
Yeah. I'll tell you, I am sympathetic with parents because they don't know what to look for. And I've had teachers that don't know what to look for. And I've had teachers as a principal that refused to have a classroom screening where the teacher would go by. And I went down and looked for it and teasedered him out and stuff like that. I agree with everything like this, but what happens is you put your letter at the first of the year in a group of 10 letters. And so dad gets through the third letter and throws them away. I think you ought to wait like a week and have it go out just by itself, not with a whole bunch of papers or report cards or anything like that. But I also think that, I had a parent, five times would come in and she'd say, it was treated. I'd scream for it because nobody else wanted to. And I'd find him, send him home. We, the PTA at Greenbrier bought a bunch of that RID and we'd give it to him and wash his hair. We'll check him tomorrow. He'd come back, it hadn't been checked, you could tell. He'd come back, it hadn't been checked, you could tell, because the eggs and the bugs and stuff. So, I'd give him another time, send him home, he'd come back. Finally, I said, "How are you washing their hair with this RID, and how are you applying it?" Well, she had it going, she put this stuff on her hand and everything. So, I took him to the sink, and I showed him how to wash their hair. And guess what? After five times, they didn't have it again. And that's what's lacking, is concern for the parent, because, and confidentiality. The first thing a kid does is, "I have lice, I'm going home." And he says it down the hall, and 600 kids hearing, you know? That doesn't happen. The thing happens is, if the parent comes in, and then you take them home, and you can use your word "snowflakes" or whatever, and you have the parent go, and then have the parent bring them back. But when you get chronic ones, there's something wrong. So, this one family, there were two sisters, had their kids at Greenbrier. So, they'd have a sleep, they'd have one to take the kids on a Friday night for a sleep over or what have you, and lo and behold, the one that came over got lice. So, the next week, got rid of them. The next week, they went to a sleepover. They got lice. And you know, the way these kids are, you can go in any classroom and see these kids are sitting down during silent reading, and his head's against his head. You're going to get lice if they got lice. And maybe not ball caps, but wearing their coat all day, the other kid's coat with a hoodie on it. And, you know, he got it from touching the kid or being up with him, but it could be that it's warm in the coat or something. But you really got to educate the parents, and you can't do it in a letter at the first of the year. You've got to tell people, and you've got to show them, and you've got, you know, I had one parent, I said, "RID," you use RID. Well, she goes to her pharmacist, says, "I need some RID." The pharmacist goes, "Well, well, well, you know, you know, RID." "No." So, she comes back the next day, and she says, "I couldn't find RID anywhere." I says, "It's not RID, it's RID." "Oh." And then she went and got it, and the kid. If they wash completely with that stuff, that stuff would do the job. But it's also them coming back, the teachers and the principals, even my custodian would sometimes check on the lice and look through, because some teachers say, "Would you do it for me?" And that's what has to happen. It's got to be one-on-one education. You can't just, you can't have a town hall and educate them. But, again, in those days, when I was a principal, they couldn't come back to school until they got rid of the lice, until they got a clean check that there were no nits or eggs, and then they could come back. That's the way it was 20 years ago.
Thank you, Trustee.
It's a problem. I get more calls about that than anything.
Thank you, Trustee Mayor. I'm going to make a couple of comments on behalf of Trustee Kelly. As we know, he had to leave, but he threw a couple of things out that I think at this point, it would be appropriate to add, just for things for the new committee that you're putting together to consider. It sounds like this is what would... One is, the policy that says in cases where your student has a chronic or persistent case, and then, there are some other interventions that you do, he wanted the committee to consider, that if the case isn't chronic and persistent, but if, just if the kid has lice in general, will there be those additional types of interventions that, I believe you described, you described that, Dana? And then, secondly, his recommendations for the committee to consider, can schools keep a supply, much like what Trustee Mayor just said, can schools keep a supply, especially in those schools that may have, you know, a population of students that could probably use the help, could they keep a supply of the appropriate lice shampoo, whether it's RID or otherwise, so that once it's discovered, they can go home with the kid, in case there's a financial hardship for the parent? So, those are two comments he wanted me to share, since he had to leave. So, just some things to be considered as the committee that you're putting together. For myself, one, thank you for putting another committee together. You know, 2011 was, you know, six years, seven years ago, almost, so it's good to just take another look. And I think that's important, and here, the kinds of perhaps barriers or challenges that parents or teachers or schools are dealing with now, that may be a little different than, say, what Trustee Mayor dealt with 20 years ago. So, thank you for that, and allowing positions for the parents to be on that. I think that's really, really important. I do have a question, and Nurse Dana, you talked about how students get lice, how they, you know, lice doesn't jump from one head to another, and all those myths that are out there. Other than head-to-head contact, is there another way for someone to get lice?
Well, my own daughter got it probably from a sleepover. Kids get together, especially girls, the demographics on this are age three to 11. And by the way, it's a national problem. This is not Washoe County School District. This is probably between nine and 12 million kids every year in schools, and they come to school, so I'm not saying they're spread in schools, but it's estimated about nine to 12 million kids every year have head lice at some point. Kids are touchy-feely, we know that. It kind of spikes in the early grades, preschool, where kids really, they exchange germs and other things, too. I mean, they kind of share saliva, they share body fluids, and they share heads and hair. Boys don't seem to get it as much. I don't know if it's their hair is shorter, but lice like a nice, full head of girl hair, shall we say? And that's what they're designed to do. I mean, this is like Darwin's theory of survival here. So, they are a reality we have to live with. Luckily, kids don't suffer morbidity or death from head lice. They do die from other conditions. And if you've worked in a hospital, like I have, on a pediatric floor, lice is the least of our worries, honestly. But we don't want to ignore the fact that this is frustrating for parents, it is labor-intensive. I've been through it, took hours of my time. Luckily, the district is a benevolent employer. I took half-day sick leave, we watched cartoons, I picked nits, I was able, I had the access. And I should take just one second to mention Rochelle Marillo's program, Family Resource Center. In cases where this checklist is not really effective, the nurses will call Rochelle, and she will send peace workers out. They've actually gone in the home, they bought the products, they have vacuumed the house, they have put stuffed animals in a dryer, because theoretically, things can hang out. So, there is a multi-tiered approach of support in our schools. I think we do a fabulous job of really addressing the problem. We can't cure it, it is a reality, it's never going to go away, but we can maybe minimize it. So, I appreciate the time you've given us here to kind of give you the overview of, you know, what we're doing, and I look forward to reconvening committee. It's been about six years, and it's time to take another look.
Fantastic. Thank you for that, Trustee Raymond.
I had one question that you kind of just answered, and then, a suggestion, I think, for the committee. So, to me, this is more, it's bigger than our district, you know, too. I think this is a community issue that, as a community, we need to deal with, and the fact-checking and the myths and dealing with all that, but also, the treatment part of it, I think, you know, it's wonderful that we're doing the work that we are doing to help families that don't have the resources available to them to buy all the shampoos and all that. But are there other nonprofits in the community that are, that we can refer people to for that support, and that can help with some of those cases? And are the school nurses and the teachers aware of those resources so that they can help those families connect? You know, I think, missing a day of work is just not an option for a lot of families to keep a kid home, but also, the time put into just treating it is so labor-intensive. And then, if you are talking about a family that's having to do this five or six times, you know, that becomes really a financial burden on top of it.
Thanks for the question. A couple of things, the five or six times, I want to hear parents say that, would concern me, because somewhere, something's going on that is re-infesting that student, and it shouldn't be happening if we're doing due diligence and the parents are doing due diligence. But to answer your question, Care Chest is a nonprofit. They provide head lice shampoo free of charge to families who can't afford it. So, there are those resources, along with the Family Resource Centers. So, there are ways that families who have barriers can access what they need. Oftentimes, it's a more complex problem, too, because family members are infested, the home has issues, families are under stress, and so, in the spectrum of issues for them, spending the hours, as you say, treating for head lice just can't happen. They're trying to put food on the table. If we were to start an exclusion policy, those families would be hit the hardest. Right now, they can send that child to school until the weekend, maybe, or when Dad has time off, right? If we were to implement an exclusion policy, that child would be missing curricular time for the entire time it takes for that family to muster resources and be given help. And I will finalize by saying, yes, school nurses are well-aware of the resources, they refer...
To look at this as maybe a gap that can be filled in our community to offer more support to these families that, you know, are not able to devote the time or the money to getting the lice gone. So, the, I guess, suggestion or comment for the committee that I had came from a teacher at my daughter's school, and she mentioned that there's, you know, presentations about bus safety to the kids, and there's, you know, talk in the classroom, I think, about washing hands and all that, but could there be a bigger presentation? I forget what the word is when they're... Assembly. Could there be an assembly around not just lice, but all communicable diseases? And even, I think about, you know, at schools now, there's so much sensitivity around food sharing and allergies, and, I mean, it could just be sort of a general assembly annually about, you know, your space and not touching heads and not, you know, washing your hands and not sharing food and all of that, to prevent, not just, help prevent not just lice, but all, the flu, the cold, everything. Because, again, it's that having to stay home with a sick kid, whether it's lice or a cold, is a burden on many families, so, that was the suggestion from a wonderful teacher.
Good. I termed the "ick factor," that that's what happens. And I think the slide that was most impactful to me in terms of really challenging the myths that are out there, that "Fear Trumps Reality" slide, if you'll go back to that one, the graph. Because as Trustee Raymond just so well said, we need to help our families understand the many ways that our students can contribute to health issues. And in looking at this list, there are many others that the public, the community, parents in the community, need to pay far more attention to than head lice. Although, like you said, there's something about that that brings up that immediate visceral emotional response. So, I'm really hopeful that that slide becomes part of what people look at, particularly parents, when we think about our responsibility as parents and what we want to try to do to make sure we help our kids and our families understand how we can help them engage in healthy habits on so many fronts, especially some of these, like the ones that have a high morbidity rate, and to have that same level of intensity and concern around some of those that have a far more significant impact on the health of our students, which we know, as you just mentioned, there's been less of a response or reaction or concern about the recent outbreak of meningitis, and I probably shouldn't use the word "outbreak," but behaviors and practices that may encourage bullying or ostracization or exclusion of other students. Which is the other thing I want to say, which is, I am glad to see that our policy aligns very clearly with national best practices, and its emphasis is on the academic needs of our students, and not, of course, overlooking the health needs. But given that you've made the case that this isn't a public health issue, then what has to be our main concern is the well-being and the education of that student, as well as them not being isolated and bullied. So, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the opportunity to revisit, like we always do with our policies, you know, dust it off, take a look at it, see what we know, see how we can improve it, see what we've, what we've found. So, I just wanted to share those comments, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McNair?
I just wanted to thank Victor and Dana. I know that when we presented this information earlier, and you all jumped right on, and I wanted to thank Dr. Green and the Abbot, that, you know, you all took this very seriously, you researched a lot of the information. And then, as a former principal, you know, I used to tell my teachers that lice, they don't know the difference between social and economic status. And so, it's really important for our community to understand that, that this is, lice is found in every single one of our schools. And it's an issue, but I feel that the district has addressed it.
...in 2011 with a similar type of representation.
Okay. Okay, so, if anyone's interested, will there be public knowledge that they can say they'd like to be involved in the committee? Because just because we've gotten so much interest in this, you know, those that may be interested may want to say, "Hey, I'd love to put my hat in..." I know it's only going to be somebody in each spot, but, you know, for someone that's interested, we just want to make sure that that information's out there, so that somebody that's interested can say, "Hey, I'd love to be a part," and then you have the hard work of figuring it out.
How we did it before was, WA found two teachers, and our parent involvement coordinator found two parents. We just want to be kind of objective, and that seemed to work pretty well. So, I think we had a good representation in stakeholders and community. We're open to suggestions, if we need to broaden that group.
Just if there's someone that has a big interest in this issue and would like to be considered, we just want to get, maybe if they're parents, they may go to the parent involvement, you know, submit an email or something, say, "Hey, I'd love to be considered," just so that it's inclusive, and if someone, again, has a really big interest in it, you know...
I would welcome them to either contact myself or Dr. Green, either way.
Okay. And so, that, and I know that when it's appropriate to, when you begin, when you put it in place, it isn't going to happen tomorrow, don't email us tomorrow. Don't email us tomorrow. But when it is the appropriate time, then we'll know how to, you know, kind of funnel that for anyone, again, that has a big interest, you know, parent, teacher, principal, whatever the case may be, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, again.
Thank you.
Thank you for jumping right on, that's a really important issue, so, thank you. We have a public comment on this, just before you leave, just, why don't we go ahead, please?
Alisa Weatherly? Sorry.
Ms. Weatherly, go right ahead.
Thank you. I took a few notes while I was doing this. I wanted to let you guys know, you know how people talk about things that are going on, they talk about each other and stuff, sometimes it's called gossip? Well, I will tell you that you guys, as a group, have a reputation for not listening, and I don't know if that's true or not, because a group is made up of individuals, and some people listen and some people don't. But I think the whole point of this is communication, and what you had said earlier about an ROI, right? We want to make sure that there's a good ROI in the money that we're spending, because this is going to cost some money. And he's right, too. I get mass mailings from people, and what they do is they go, and they go into the recycle bin, right? And we do have so much information that we're supposed to divulge, or, you know, to incorporate, that it's hard to know what to do. So, I think when you do communicate this, what I would like to do is be part of this committee that goes into these schools as a person, talks to the kids, because it really does start with the kids, and tell them things like, "It's not okay for you to do whatever you want with your body." This is one of the things that the school has excluded, that anything the kids want to do is okay, but guess what? There's consequences to it. Now, if I go in there and say, "Don't sleep around before you're married," some people might say, "Well, that's wrong." I go, "Well, no, I know from personal experience, that's not wrong, that's right. You can listen to me, or you don't have to listen to me, but let me have a voice to go in there and tell them. I'll sing it to them if I have to." That's kind of what I do. And the other thing, too, is that, who pays for what? There is probably a small percentage of people that have the lice problem, and it's the parents that aren't listening. We want them to listen. But I heard Dana, overheard her say, that there's more lice that's transmitted during sports events than at school. And so, from a budget standpoint, I'm going, "We want to cut down the budget? Let's get rid of some sports, okay?" I know, we're just tying things together here, but there's so much money spent on sports, and what sport has actually given one of those child a future in something? Probably nothing. Let's start about, let's look at our budget and say, "Let's spend less money on sports, more money on education for brilliant people, more attention to these kids," because I'm not against this, I'm for the kids. Let's put more attention into telling the kids what's right, what's true, what's not, and then, let's spend a little bit of extra money getting a hold of those people that we actually have to enable, right? There's some people that take care of business, there's some people that don't. We're spending a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of effort and energy on the people, the parents that either don't want to take care of it, don't have time, or whatever. the parents that either don't want to take care of it, don't have time or whatever. But why don't we focus on the people that will listen, because we do want to be heard. We want, I have, in order for me to be heard, I have to listen first, right? So I've been listening to you guys and you have some good things to say. So I will say, I will be emailing you and saying, can we please take this to the next step and tell these kids everything that's right or wrong, okay? Or if I make a public proclamation that Jesus Christ is Lord in public, he will proclaim me to his angels and so I'm saying it in public, he's Lord. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Do we have any other public comment? No. Okay. Thank you very much Dana and Victor, we appreciate your work and, and, and thank you for forging ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate that. All right, now we're on to agenda item 5.04. This is a presentation and discussion, this again is not an action item, it's a presentation and discussion on the impact of actual enrollment numbers on school sites, site staffing levels, remember as we talked about, um, what do you call it when you, allocations, that's it. Thank you very much. And so on, uh, so what, we're going to look at how those, those changes in staffing levels are communicated to school sites, employees, students and families and so on. And we see the, an entire crew in front of us, so since you have the mic, Chief of Staff Lysik, we'll go to you.
All right, that is right, we do have an entire crew and hopefully this will not be an ick factor, as a prior presentation, scientifically speaking. With me is Tom Szysinski, our Chief Financial Officer, Dawn Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer, and up there, Dr. McNeil, our Deputy Superintendent. This is a collective presentation because collectively we do this work in the spring and in the fall. There's a lot of people involved in the allocation, the staffing and the overage process. Just a small group of us are represented here today, so we will hopefully provide a large overview of our process in the fall, since we came to you in the spring. In May, we provided our process then. And so at the request of trustees, we're coming back now to tell you what happens in the fall.
Thank you, David. I'll jump off on the general allocation process. So as, as we go through each school year, and this has been a process, this has been going on for many, many years, and we'll talk, talk you through what happens in our school district and other school districts as we go through this presentation. But each November, we work with the district's very qualified demographer, Randy Baxley from Capital Projects and Planning, and he gives us some preliminary enrollment for the next school year. So just like we're starting the budget process early, we start our enrollment process early to see what things look like for the next fiscal year. We take that information and we share it with each of our school sites to say, here's what the enrollment looks like for next school year. So we're working on, we're starting the process in November, next month, for next fiscal year, fiscal year, 19th school year. And so again, we take this information from our demographer, share it with each of our school sites and say, this is what the enrollments look like for each of your schools for the next coming year. And we have some back and forth with them. And based on that back and forth, we generate an allocations model for the next school year through our, our, uh, what am I thinking of, Jill's office? Physician Control, the name was escaping me, thank you for helping me out, David and Dawn. And so then we get those allocations out to the schools. So at this point, we're, again, we're working with estimates, but at some point, we have to true up estimates to actual. So obviously then, the, we go through the, the spring process, work with this allocation process, and then we go through the summer and then school starts in August. And so we have to take what actually has occurred and match it up with the estimates that we provided, you know, starting back in November or the preceding year and look and see what each of those schools looks like. Because what we learn over the summer times is a school, a, a child could be in one school, but through family considerations, they've moved to another school. And so, again, we can't forecast that to an exact science. And so what occurs is that we have to make adjustments and get our actual enrollments and match them up with our estimates. And so at this point, we'll go to the next slide and continue to talk about that process.
So this is just a little bit of history on what traditionally was called Count Day. So in prior law, school districts were given their apportionment or DSA funding once per year based on the first full month of school and session. So for, that typically translated to the Fourth Friday after school started. So that, for as many years as we could go back, is how schools were given their funding up until 2015. As Tom laid out, they would use, districts would use this Count Day to true up projections with actual enrollment, and that's how we were given our funding from the state. In 2015, the legislature took action and changed that to quarterly apportionment. So we receive now our DSA funding four times per year on a quarterly basis, based on the first count of October 1st. It's based now on average daily enrollment, so it's not just how many pupils you have in your building anymore, it's actually how often do, you know, what's your average enrollment? We do in, with the state, we have a good partnership with the state and do an annual attendance audit, which is going on now, led by Bryn Lofpentha. And they come in, they, the state comes in, they hand select usually 15 to 20 schools and do an actual audit of those schools. And we've had favorable audits and we're usually off just a handful of kids each year. And that usually concludes by the end of October. But because of the change in the state law to the quarterly apportionment, and now our first count doesn't begin until October 1st, we have a time gap. So school for us starts usually around August 7th, but we don't have an opportunity to true up our funding until October 1st from the state. So that presents a bit of a challenge there, which we'll kind of get into the next slide a little bit. So districts in Nevada still use the Fourth Friday as a true up process to match up spring projections with the fall actual enrollment. So here in Washoe County, we still do a Fourth Friday Count Day, which allows us an opportunity, as Tom mentioned, if a student moves from, you know, Anderson Elementary to Beasley Elementary, the resources really do follow the student. So it's an opportunity for us to true up our projection enrollment versus actual enrollment. So the second bullet, our student accounting department works with all of our schools. We do four counts. The, the first four weeks of school, we do one count each week. It's usually a Friday, Thursday, Friday, Friday. And that allows us to clean up the Infinite Campus Master Register for each school. So in other words, any no-show students, you know, a parent might go on over the summer and register a kid to attend a certain school. I mean, they will show up in Infinite Campus, but these four counts in the month of August allow us to go verify the act, who's actually in that particular class, and then we remove the no-show students. The fourth and final count for us is, the Friday was actually before Labor Day, so we adjusted it to Tuesday, September 5th to catch out-of-state students, because we find over Labor Day, we get a lot of students who come from California, because they have a different schedule, they start a little bit later than we do. So based on that count, we then adjust our staffing across all of the schools. And that process is outlined in the Teachers Association contract.
And so this fall, we had weekly meetings. These meetings were with our Office of School Leadership, Growth, and also in our Financial Review Committee, where we looked at the numbers. And we looked to see if there were any issues bubbling up in the schools. If we came across a school where the enrollment was actually higher, then what we did was we put in a substitute into that role so that we could have a classroom created at the school without violating the negotiated agreement with the WEA, which says that we have to have a spot for all of our teachers before we go hire more teachers. And knowing that we are going into this process where we might be moving teachers to follow the students. So there were some areas where we allowed subs to be in those classrooms right away in order to alleviate the high numbers of students in the class. And this was meant to also minimize the student movement by creating this class. And our whole goal is to have as little disruption to the students as possible. This fall, we had a place for every teacher, there were no layoffs. And out of over 4,000 teachers, there were only 24 teachers who had to find a new spot. We always place our one-to-one matches first, meaning these teachers go in and interview with the other schools. And if the school says, I really want this teacher, and the teacher says, I really want this school, that's what we consider a one-to-one match. Eighteen of those 24 teachers were one-to-one matches. We have a meeting where we have all of our stakeholders around the table in this room, including our associations, the Principals Association and our Teachers Associations, our Area Superintendents, Executive Directors from Office of Student Services, and we all meet together collaboratively to place these teachers. And this year, with six teachers, it lasted all of 11 minutes. All of this process is defined in the contract with WEA, it's outlined in the article, and it explains the process that we go through, which we do every year. And we do this in a very collaborative manner.
So finally, and I just want to send a shout out to our Human Resources Department as well, because in years past, when we've had this allocation meeting and the overage meeting, it's been a few hours and Dawn's absolutely right, it was 11 minutes. It was a record-setting meeting. So kudos to that entire team and Business and Finance and Chief of Staff and all of our Area Superintendents and Executive Directors. So just some real basic final comments. We had mentioned, we have an outstanding demographer in Mr. Baxley, and his projections were pretty much spot-on, but there are a couple mitigating factors with that, that I think all of the community is facing as far as possible increases in housing prices. And we had two charter schools open, even though that, you know, we always strive to make sure that we have our students within our district. We want to make sure that students have quality education. And so we, you know, the housing prices, and we understood that that was going to be a factor. And then also, this is a process that's used across the state of Nevada. This is not something that's unique to Washoe County. Other districts call it surplusing. We tend to use the word overage, and that's how we make sure that our teachers are in front of their students. And then finally, our Chief of Staff did some additional research and found that it's not just within the state of Nevada, it's also in several large states, populous states, Florida, Wisconsin, Washington, Idaho, Massachusetts, Texas, Georgia and California that use this process as well. So it's not something that's unique to the state of Nevada. So in closing, if the board has any questions or comments, we'd be happy to entertain.
Yes, first of all, thank you. Thank you, yes, Trustee Frankel?
Yes, and actually, as I look at this, it's, it's amazing. 99.7% accuracy is, is a remarkable thing, because you know, Tom, you're always saying we don't have a crystal ball on many things that, you know, that we don't know. But that is an incredible number in terms of accuracy. So wow, is what I have to say. And kudos to Randy and the team and to all of you for, for this work. And thank you for explaining it and the process, explaining it to us and to the public. The thing that I also want to understand, because I know that as much as, I'm going back to that previous slide, that we had to move 24 teachers around, and I know that has an impact on the students, and we try very much, and I appreciate that that's our commitment to disrupt as minimally as possible. Can you explain a little bit about how the communication happens with the, the, the parents? Because I think part of what is challenging is for the parents, they don't know what's happened, they, you know, and so tell us a little bit about how that communication happens to those classes that are impacted and those students who are potentially going to either move to a new class or get a new teacher or lose the teacher that they've been with for the first four weeks of the year. And I know that that, I think we all acknowledge that that's a disruptive experience for them, but how do we communicate that with the parents?
And let me just add this, just the same question, but how do we communicate that with the teachers? Because it seemed this year, I mean, you know, I haven't, this is my third year going into a new year, and it seems as though there was more angst about it from the teachers this year than ever before. And so just how does that, same question, but just with the staff, because I know it wasn't a new process, so, thank you.
So I'll, I'll start and then if anybody wants to chime in. So just as David was talking about earlier, we do this four times. And so with the very first count, our principals contact their area superintendents and they let them know, hey, I've got a class of 45, or I've got, you know, a hotspot. And then we review what that hotspot looks like every single week within the FRC meeting and then with the area superintendents. And then the principal typically will either send out a letter or a notification. So for example, if we did set up a brand-new kindergarten classroom, the principal would then send notice out to the parents, hey, we're going to be, you know, splitting up a classroom, or we're going to be putting a long-term substitute in here. But then that allows for those students to go ahead and get started within that kindergarten classroom instead of waiting four or five weeks and making that relationship. So the sooner that we can do this, the better off it's going to be for our students. And Dr. Taylor, as far as the, the teachers, Human Resources works with our area superintendents, they work with the, the principals on a regular basis as far as noticing. So the teachers are actually provided the information as far as what their choices are, what their rankings are. Dawn was talking about a one-to-one match, so I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about what that whole entire process looks like?
Sure, absolutely. So what happens is every school gets a form, and they have to look at that form and see if they're over-allocated or under-allocated, and they're looking at everyone, all the teachers on that sheet, or some retiring, are people going out on a year's leave. And then based on that, if it's determined that they have to overage a teacher, then they get instructions from the Office of Human Resources about how to go about that process that's outlined in the negotiated agreement. They identify the teacher by first asking for volunteers in the school. There might be someone who's like, I've been thinking about a change, I want to do something different, I'm going to volunteer to go on overage. If there aren't any volunteers, then they take the least senior teacher in their school. So even though I might be losing a third-grade teacher, it might be the first-grade teacher that's the least senior, and that's how that occurs per the contract. Once those teachers are identified, those names get sent to Human Resources. We communicate directly with those teachers so that they understand the process. As Kristin said, they get to preference at least five other positions, because we provide them what we call a needs list, which are all the openings in the district. And that's why we can't just fill those other spots with another teacher if we were allocating to another school. We have to wait till that overage process is done and ensure that those teachers have a spot before we can fill with a new hire. So they will list their preferences, we encourage them to interview with those that they put down and other, other schools who might be interested in them. And we try to make as many one-to-one matches as possible. So it's done with a lot of communication with the school principals and with the teachers.
Thanks to the both of you. Trustee Mayor?
Yeah, I have some questions, because this has always been a problem of mine when I was a principal. And you change some of the things to make it more of a problem. Because it used to be that the overage, first, second, third was a group, fourth, fifth and sixth was a group. Now you changed it to where, you know, if it's a sixth-grade problem and the first grade's the youngest teacher, they get cut, sixth grade has to move all around. So that's become a problem. Another problem is all-year-round schools. Because by the time you get through your four weeks, some of those schools have been in school for eight weeks. And so then you say, well, you're going to lose a teacher. Well, they've bonded with those kids for eight weeks. It's too bad you can't do all-year-round separately and adjust it within the all-year-round schools before you do the, wait four weeks and then do it. Because it's actually eight weeks, almost a quarter of a school's gone.
I'll address the multi-track year-round. So with multi-track year-round schools now versus how we used to do them, our multi-tracks schools start the same day as our balanced calendar schools, so they're in session the same amount of time as a regular school. Also, our multi-track schools weren't affected through this process, we didn't have any movement at those schools.
Well, because I, I got several calls from, in the Sun, in the Spanish Springs area and down south, and said they had to wait eight weeks.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they were waiting eight weeks for. They start the same day that every other school does, they follow the same process. So we had the process wrapped up by the sixth week of school. But those, none of the multi-track, none of the multi-track schools had to overage or lose a teacher, so I'm not sure what was conveyed. lose a teacher, so I'm not sure what was conveyed.
They had the, the all-year-round starts the same time the regular school starts. So the all schools start the first week of August, then why does it take all of September to do the counts? That seems to me like if it's the first week of August, that seems like almost a week.
Yeah, so I'm not sure I understand the question totally, but we, as I mentioned in the prior slide, we do four counts. Each of the four weeks, August, and then the last one was September. So the fourth count is the culmination of when we do the staffing changes. Because there's so, we find that there's so much movement in the prior weeks. We have a lot of no-shows that we're still cleaning up, so it's not fair to base somebody's staffing on a inflated number. So, and there's still lots of movement of kids between schools and that typically settles down after the fourth week.
You know, another thing is, I don't know who's doing all this projecting, but Florence Drake has like 284 kids in it. The schools right around that area are all small, but yet they didn't lose a whole bunch of teachers. But yet, it used to be, anything under 300 students was a talk and pay for principals too. You know, it was eight, it was, 300 was teaching principal and it was a different, then it was up to 600 and so forth.
Yeah, that's probably a different agenda item on that.
Well, no, I'm talking about class size. If it's, why are these, some of these schools so low? If it was projected, you know, the projections were right on 99.7%.
So I think part of that goes back to what we were talking about earlier as far as the housing market. We know that right now in our district, we have more CIT, children in transition students than we've had before, and a lot of that has to do with apartments, leases, housing. So some of these schools in our inner core, their populations may be increasing, where schools in the suburbs, their populations may be shifting a bit until we can figure out, you know, the whole housing issue within our community. But that's probably part of the issue, trustee mayor.
Well, it's the inner core, low on enrollment, Greenbrier, Florence Drake, they're in the inner core. I don't understand, I really don't understand.
I'm sorry, what's your question on that, trustee mayor?
Well, I'm just understanding if it's 99.7% accurate, how come these schools, it wasn't accurate to 99%?
I think the 99% wasn't a per-school, it was a district projection. Am I correct in that? So that's why it wasn't per-school.
Overall, it's 99% accurate, but you do get migration. So one school could be low, one school could be high when you net it together, that's the collective overall total. So yeah, we do see migration. We can't forecast when one family moves from one school to another. I think we used Anderson and whatever the other school was in the example. So it's just migration, you're going to have some low, some high, and that's what causes the movement that we had with the 24 teachers.
Well, you know, too, some of these principals, when you send them out, you've got 18 teachers and they're sitting there with 24, they go to a staff meeting and they say, we're going to have to lose four teachers, and this is in the spring. And so they get all riled up and the parents get all riled up and they start putting a picket line around the administration building. It happened to Hall. I can tell you several schools that it happened to. And to me, you've got to use the word tentative, or you have to use, don't get excited, this is going to be adjusted, but they're getting teachers so excited, they're packing their bags to leave. And then they say, oh, to the poor parent, they say, oh, I wished I could stay here, but they're transferring me because I'm overage, I'm one of the four. And it really is stress that's not necessary. Because if the principal got that list and at the top it says tentative allotments for the school year, and then they could say, oh, well, we'll wait until the school year. You understand what I'm saying? There's a lot of stressed-out teachers. I don't know about the rest of people, but I get a ton of calls like that, especially like a few of the schools that got big cuts. Spanish Springs Elementary was another one that parents and everybody called, you're putting us on year-round and now we're going to, we're going to be losing teachers. And it turned out they weren't. All of it was for naught. I just don't understand.
Thank you, trustee mayor. Dr. Feenster?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think you guys do put out something that says tentative. I don't think it's, it's never accurate because we can't do that tentative. I've always remembered that. But not to brag about myself, but I've got to tell you something, I never, ever, ever came, I mean, I was always within five students and I was at at-risk schools, train a middle school and hug, you could come very close, but it takes a lot of energy and time on the behalf of the principal. And you are correct by saying the principal sets the tone. It is so important, and maybe that's something we can talk about, is principals setting the tone, letting them, parents know that look. Just in looking at our numbers in first and second grade, we might lose one teacher there. And that's so important, that way you're off the hook, you're saying, you know, we did warn you about this. But it is so important to spend that time in the summer, meeting with every student, I met with every student in the summer. I sacrificed my summers, even though we didn't get much time off, but you sacrifice your time on the front end so that you don't have these problems. But to come within five students, I got to tell you, that means you put out a lot of time and energy. And I'm thinking about it today with Facebook and the communications that we have, it should be really simple. How many people are living in your household? Because in your transient areas, you do have two and three families sometimes living together. You can get those numbers from the parents and from the students. I, I think it's just putting in the time, but I do believe that you guys say it is tentative and that's very important. And it is also extremely imperative that the principal sends out the communication and on an ongoing basis, saying that there's a possibility. And that way it alleviates a lot of that. And the principal should not be all hyped up about it. They have to be really calm. I truly have never, I mean, I learned the hard way because I lost four teachers and I thought this would never happen to me again. And it never did because I would make those phone calls in the summer. Are you coming? Do you have any relatives that are going to be living with you? And I got to tell you, it works, but you have to put that time out and you have to communicate with parents. Even if you have to send home five communications in five weeks, it's important. But it's, I also had a protocol of meeting with every parent before students started school. And it worked. I never lost teachers, not after that first time, because I know how it affects students because they bond with those teachers in the beginning and they, it's really hard to make the change. So I started putting out the time in the summer and it works. So I think, I think you guys have done a great job of, you know, warning everyone that this is only tentative. You might lose one or two teachers or you might gain one or two, depending on the numbers. But again, the principal is in the best position to know the dynamics and the demographics of that school. And that's who, that's, the onus is on that principal. And you get your vice principal to help, you get your counselors to help, and you know what? It's an, it's also a great avenue of knowing your parents, you know, any potential problems that may occur. So it's, it's a great strategy. You get to know students, you get to know parents, and you get to know who, you know, you know, what teachers you might potentially lose. And you sit down and you chat with those teachers. And sometimes the teachers are the first ones to say, you know what, well, I'd like a change, so I would volunteer to be, you know, someone to move to another school. It is workable and the principals who know the tricks of the trade, they do it well and they get it right. Not 100%, but I got to tell you, it's, it's almost 99%. But time is, is important.
Thank you, Dr. Feenster. Trustee Raymond?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the time that you put into gathering all the information and it was very helpful. One question, was it 24 schools that were impacted or did some schools have more than one teacher?
Yeah, some schools had two or three that were impacted, so I wouldn't say that's 24 schools affected. It's 24 individual teachers.
Yeah. And I think that is, you know, relatively, I mean, overall, the district, it's a very small number. I, I think the fact that we heard from parents and teachers, it's still a very hard place for them to be in. And, and I don't, I wish we didn't have to do it this way. I know everybody does. I think, I guess where I would like to see maybe an effort and sort of off of what trustee Feenster was saying is, is that seemed maybe that the communication wasn't as strong this year as maybe it has been in the past, if it was an uptick. That some of the instances that I heard directly about where, you know, parents were told in the parent-teacher night, the back-to-school night, that, you know, the parents that were worried because a class size of, you know, 11 kids or 13 kids doesn't seem like, you know, maybe sustainable when we've increased the class sizes, but were told by the teacher and I think in some cases even by a principal, oh, it's, you're safe, you're not going to get moved. And so, you know, I don't think it's coming from, you know, the meetings that you're having, but there's some maybe gap in that communication that it still doesn't make it easier, you know, speaking from the parent perspective, to hear that your first grader is, is going to have a new teacher five weeks into the school year. But if you have time to process it, maybe it makes it a little easier if you know it's coming, you know, you can talk to your kid about it more maybe or, but it, it felt like more of a surprise for the people that I talked to that they weren't anticipating this happening. And if we have, you know, four counts that are not fluctuating dramatically at a site, then there should be a way to kind of prepare everyone for it. And, and then my question would even be like, can the switch just happen sooner? Because I know you, you might get three people over Labor Day weekend, but, you know, if it's not going to make the, or break the shift where you, you have to get moved, if you're so low or so high where you're definitely going to get moved, then can it be addressed earlier? I don't know. I just, I hate this process.
Well, I'll say, I mean, there's always room for improvement and we'll definitely take that into consideration as far as the communication between the schools and the family. One thing that I think is important to remember though is that this was a legislative session and as far as the budget and those types of things, as far as what time that we're notified, what our district budget is going to be is always a mitigating factor with allocations. But as I said, there's always room for improvement, so we strive to do that.
And I'm just going to jump in real quickly since I've been around probably the longest and Labor Day's always been really critical. I know it's a little tricky, but you, you have a lot of families that may not want to start school until after Labor Day. And so whether we like it or not, Labor Day's always been kind of a critical day and so until we can get over that hurdle, you know, starting it earlier is just, has just been a challenge. Historically, I mean, I've been looking at this stuff for 26 years and, and Labor Day's always been a critical day and looking at my two former principals up here, they probably would testify to that a little bit. So anyway, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry. And I'm not saying that we should change the calendar, I'm just questioning if you're in another district that starts...
And they do have the communication early on with their staff, like, hey, we might be, you know, we're really down in enrollment, so we might lose somebody. All of those conversations do happen early on.
Just for some reason, and thank you for that, chief of staff, Lasik. For some reason this year, just people seem to feel as though it was more last-minute than usual, for whatever the reason may be. And that may be just because it was, you know, a little bit of angst over because we were talking about, you know, increasing class sizes in the spring, you know, and allocations. I mean, that came up publicly earlier than it typically does. Typically, that conversation isn't even happening publicly in the spring. It's you guys doing the work that you typically do, but maybe because that was already on the radar, it just, this year, just, it felt different this year. I mean, welcome, I know it's your first year, but welcome. It just felt different this year. I mean, it did, it just felt different this year. So it may be all of those things. So just continue to look for opportunities to get better at it, it's all we can do. But thank you for coming and taking the time to share the process with us because it makes all of us more knowledgeable. What do we do? Anything else for the staff that's here? Not at all? Thank you so much. Thank you so much, thank you so much. That was not an action item? Yeah, maybe for the end. Okay, just as we go on to agenda item 6.01, any future, future agenda item request? And I already see a light on trustee Frankel.
Yes, thank you, President Taylor. I know that, and I was trying to remember back and think back when we had our update and I appreciated human resources bringing that to us. An update, just getting an update on the big insurance decision that we made a couple of years ago to, that we went with Renown solely as our provider. And so I wanted to have an opportunity to kind of take a look at how that's going and what savings we're having, because I know we're going to be looking at that decision, it's probably going to be here before we know, it's going to feel like tomorrow, really, because it's next year that we're going to be revisiting that decision or that contract. So I wondered if we might just get that on the agenda sometime in the next couple of months so that we're ahead of the game and understand a little bit about what our experience has been to date with respect to savings from the prior decision that we made.
We have insurance update on here. Any other suggestions? Yes, trustee Raymond?
Yeah, I wondered if we could see a presentation or report before, probably before February, so no rush, that budget presentation that's scheduled around the impact that the increase in class sizes has had in the district and kind of what class sizes look like this year and, you know, feedback or we've received from teachers or anything like that, just so, that was a hard decision we made last year and I think I just personally would like to kind of see how it's played out this year as we look at next year's budget.
Okay, so we look at, look at the impact of the class size increases that we, that we approved in the spring? Okay.
Yeah, and I guess generally kind of that, and I don't know if they're the same thing, the, you know, what it, class sizes are looking like, you know, in the schools where we went multi-track and because we'll be, when does that happen again, that conversation around? It's already happened, right? Yeah.
I think it's happening now because they finished the count. Yeah, that kind of thing happens right about now.
So I don't know, that would be a different one, sorry.
Okay, so that, okay. Yeah, though, yeah, that's a, and that's a separate agenda item that should be happening anyway, because as they finish the count, they get a chance to make projections on who needs to be doing the sump. Did I get that right? Mm-hmm, okay. Anything else from anyone? Okay, that's it for future agenda item requests. Do we have any closing public comment, Ms. Batchelder?
Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly, come on up, you have three minutes again, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping that Ms. Chacon would be here because actually I'm going to make some suggestions and I think that there are going to be suggestions that could be put into by the next future generation if the Lord doesn't come back before that. We say that we base success on graduation rate and what I'm wondering is, has the bar been lowered? That's my understanding is that our bar for graduation has been lowered and if that's the case, then what does it do to our nation? It probably does not put us in good position, so they probably want to address that in the future. And I also noticed that there is a budget for the GFOA best practices traveling to Chicago. And I know, listening to a Trey Gowdy presentation once where he itemized people going to Las Vegas and just racking up some real dollars with some training things that probably weren't necessary. And I thought, well, my goodness, we've got some brainiacs here. Why don't we have that best practices thing here in Reno? Because we have plenty of hotels, we have plenty of rooms, we could not spend the money to travel someplace, we could use our... our own talent, bring people in here, and increase the economy. As far as balancing the budget goes, I've understood that from a government standpoint, you have to spend it. If you don't spend it, you don't get the same amount next year. I'd love to see that changed, to have some rewards going to people that actually don't spend as much as in their budget so that they don't try to increase to keep up to that next point. The attendance system at the school, I think it needs to be automated. I had to call in my grandson, and I did it the way I was supposed to. Then I got the phone call and the email that I hadn't done it. So what I'm thinking is that there's probably something from that automated system that could be looked at and fixed. I also think that we, as a nation, should stop making our nation bilingual anymore. It's hard to get a job if you don't speak Spanish. And I know it's another enabling thing, as if they're not smart enough to learn the language, which is not true. My, my parents, my grandparents were from like Sweden and Norway, and that's, it's a hard language to learn, you know? English is a hard language to learn. But what we've done is we've kind of buckled under to, well, they're not capable to learn the English language, so we're going to hire people that are bilingual. And I think it's wrong, and I think that something should be done about it. And the other thing too is from an accountability standpoint, because when Dawn Hecabee and I used to work for the same company, we used to do some wage surveys, but it was always with our group of people. So the casinos never got really good increases because they only wage surveyed in between. The government used to get people because of the benefits, but now there's so much money out there that it's a good place to work, but the fact is that people like me can't support it. So there's an accountability there, both from a monetary standpoint and from a moral standpoint, because they do factor in that I think it's important for us to tell these kids that there is such a thing as absolute truth, both in science and in morals. And I hope that we can change the school system to do that, and I'd like to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Thank you for sticking around for the entire meeting. We appreciate that. Any other public comment, Ms. Batchelder? Did we miss anyone? Okay, see?
I wasn't going to say anything. Is that okay?
Okay, well, we will ask you to do after your comment, if you will, then just fill out a public comment card, okay?
Oh, sure.
Okay, and then, so just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes, okay?
Okay, I'm Catherine Loudon. And just on the discussion of overages, I was at a school where we lost a first grade teacher, and she was notified on Wednesday, and then the kids were notified that Thursday. And they had to stay with that teacher until the next Thursday, and then the children were broken apart and put in other classes. And it was just a really long waiting period, and I was willing to take, I was going to get five new students, and I really just wanted them as soon as I could. First of all, because I needed them to get used to my rules and the way my classroom worked, and I wanted them, they already knew they weren't going to be with that teacher. So they weren't really being as productive as they could have been if they could have just known, even since they found out on Thursday, they could have started on Monday in my classroom, that would have been great, but to wait until actually that Friday. So the whole time I had parents coming, and they would go by and say, "Oh, that's going to be my new teacher." And it's like, yes, and I want you in my class now! And so I don't know why there has to have that waiting period. I think it's kind of, I think it's beneficial. I think it's a terrible thing that we have to do this, but I completely understand overages, but let's just do it quickly. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come down, and yes, we'll get a public comment card from you. Thank you so much. You stuck around, so you may as well have a comment, right? You came here for us, so that's good. Thank you. Any other public comment, Ms. Batchelder? Nope, we didn't, haven't missed anyone? Okay, then, just as a reminder, everyone will have a special meeting of the Board of Trustees next Thursday, November 2nd at 4:00 p.m. right here in the administrative building, and then our next regular meeting of the board is Tuesday, November 14th. And then note that the November 14th board meeting will include an item regarding the naming of the New South Meadows Elementary School. And so if members of the community wish to provide comments ahead of that meeting, you can please email Ms. J.J. Batchelder with Board Services Department, just look that up online, washelschools.net, and then she'll make sure that all of your comments via email will be included with the meeting materials and sent out to the Board of Trustees for our consideration. Okay? Thank you, everybody. Our meeting is adjourned.